Planning Commission has been continuing to meet. They've made a lot of commitment to this. I think for the last two and a half years, they have met once a month on this. We've covered basic topics each time. So I know they've put a lot of effort into it. And thank you to the board for, you know, having, considering these extra meetings, because I think it has been helpful to break it down into smaller bite-sized pieces. We are doing the complete zoning ordinance rewrite. The rewrites, the ordinance is about fifty years old. We were finding that we were doing considerable ordinance amendments, about one a month, to correct issues or to develop, because of new issues that come about. And because it's been amended so many times through that fifty years, it's just very kind of cumbersome and hard to use right now. So really, the goal of the rewrite, the purpose, and Planning Commission is, you know, sic amicit, and this is because I start with this slide every time, just so we remember what the purpose is. It's about modernizing, simplifying, and clarifying the zoning ordinance. As we started talking about that, that was something that was important to me. That was the purpose of why we were doing this. And then we had a conversation with Mr. Lumpkin today, and he said, well, what is the purpose of the zoning ordinance? Which we hadn't really, we always talked about the purpose of why we were changing this, but we really didn't talk about what the purpose of the ordinance is. So, one thing you'll notice in the rewrite, I hope it's been easier for you to find things as you look through it. You know, right now, we have things, and we've put a lot of things in the supplemental section, so sometimes when you're trying to find something, it'll be Article One, Division Six, Section so-and-so, and you have to try to work through it and find the division. Hope you've noticed as you went through that the section numbers run in order, so it should be, if I say Section fifteen, five oh three, you should be able to find it much easier than digging through divisions and articles and things like that. But the purpose of the zoning ordinance is in Section fifteen point three, which is the first page of your ordinance. I also handed out to you a handout that has some purposes from some other jurisdictions. So as I was looking at it, this is what the purpose of our ordinance is: to provide an efficient process of development, preserve our agricultural lands, appropriate use and occupancy of buildings for protection against land overcrowding and undue population density in relation to the community facilities, creation of a convenient, attractive, and harmonious community, economic development activities, and a good, harmonious civic design. So that all seems to make a lot of sense, but the point was, are we missing anything there? So we did take a look quickly today at some of the purposes that other people put in their zoning ordinance. And what I found pretty interesting was Henrico, Powhatan, and Spotsamania, and I'm sure if I looked at others, all had pretty much the exact same wording of these standards. And this is, that happens to be Spotsamania, but Powhatan and Henrico, which are on your sheet, are almost exactly the same. So at some point, this was probably either in the state code or something, and everybody sort of cut and paste. So I took a look at it to see what areas we might be missing. We might have put it in different language, but we did miss a few things. We didn't make any changes to the purpose of the zoning rewrite, but we may want to consider adding these. The reduce for red congestion in the public streets. The underlined ones are the ones that I feel like our purpose doesn't hit. Number four, to facilitate the provision of adequate police and fire protection, disaster, evacuation, civil defense, transportation, et cetera. We probably wouldn't need to put airports in there, but we may. And then number ten, to promote the health, safety, and general welfare of the public. And eleven, protect surface water and groundwater. And twelve, implement comprehensive plan. Ten and twelve, ten, Spotsamania combined, there's twelve, Powhatan and Henrico have that as a separate one. So our thought process is maybe we should possibly add these so that we are as comprehensive as possible. It's good for you to know what the purpose of the zoning ordinance is, so when you're adopting it and when you're looking at it, these are the things it's trying to accomplish. Does anybody have any concerns with adding the underlined versions of what I had included?
Um, Mr. Chairman. So, eleven.
Eleven. Mm-hmm.
Um, protect surface water and groundwater. I'm okay with what you've got underlined.
Right, so we're not in Chesapeake Bay area, so I didn't underline all of that, so I just only underlined.
Well, I don't know with the new stuff we're being drawn into, with three, so we are getting pulled into a lot of that. All right, so, and then back, the slide before this.
Sure.
I kind of like the, what was it? The historic areas.
Uh, number five.
Yeah. I really kind of like that.
Okay.
Because I'm thinking about the, some of the things we've heard about historic graveyards and stuff like that.
Okay.
I really like that. And we're not going to put anything in on the economic development.
If you look at our existing one, um, under fifteen point three, number E. So we have that, just in a different, a little bit different wording, but the same concept.
Okay, so those would be my comments.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I noticed none of the others looking at these here, but, well, you missed it, maybe a pound pad. I mean, look at that. No, they, yeah, they're identical. Ours simply says the efficient process of development. These others talk about encourage economic development activities that provide desirable employment, enlarge the tax base.
E, if you look at E, talks about economic.
Right, okay, yeah, there we go. Economic development in general.
The first one's a process.
Process, yeah, right, there we go.
E is that one.
Yeah, so we copied that, right? Yeah, that's right.
And they don't say anything about.
So nobody says efficient process of development.
I think they say it in a little different, different manner, but I think we've hit all of the other highlights that everybody else has, except with the underlined ones.
And, and add historic, right?
And we're going to add, yeah, historic. So we would be adding.
Number five.
Number two, four, five, and ten, and a portion of eleven, and implementation of the comprehensive plan. And I think that would be a very comprehensive list of what our purpose of our zoning ordinance is.
Yeah, I think that would be comprehensive, but just, the longer the list, the more it'll lose your focus, so I try and focus on thirty-five things.
Right.
Focusing on nothing, so I'm okay with adding a few, but I just don't want the list to grow so long you lose your focus.
Right. I think that just hits the highlights, and it also sort of complements the different chapters of the comprehensive plan, too.
Ten and twelve, right now, both talk about the comprehensive plan.
Right, yeah, and we would only have it in one place.
Okay, just checking, thank you.
And so if you look at Henrico and Powhatan, they split it out, so.
Okay.
Am I comfortable with that before I move into today's presentation? Okay. Okay, so the agenda for today is we sort of want to give you a highlight of the significant changes that we've made to the ordinance, some of the good work that we've done over the last two years, a summary of the changes that were made to the ordinance based on the feedback from the public meetings, those would be those six meetings we have. We have about six decision points that we would like feedback from the Planning Commission and the board of how we want to advertise the ordinance and how we want to address certain things, and then I have that timeline for our public hearing schedule. So we'll start with the highlights. Those, of course, were just the meetings that we had. The first, the May meetings dealt with the different individual zoning districts. The June meetings dealt with all the development standards, and then the July meetings was sort of everything else that didn't fit to either one of those categories. So some of the highlights and some of the good changes that I think we've made with the, with the rewrite so far is, of course, the first part is the formatting, and I hope everybody had a chance to take a look at it, find that it's easy to read, easy to find things. We took a lot of the legalese language and very tried to simplify it as much as possible, tried to eliminate areas that where staff has to interpret things, make it very clear so that anybody, a layman person opening it up, to a developer, to an attorney, to anybody could open it up, read it, understand what we anticipate. On all the use districts, we've tried really hard to clarify the statement of intents and tie them to the comprehensive plan. We did a lot of removing things like low-density, encourage low-density development, because we really don't have that defined term at all. And we talked about, more about lot sizes and density in terms of specific numbers instead of these vague terms, because low-density, to me, may mean something very different to somebody else. We added the application section and codified our pre-application process. We added numerous state code required uses, such as family day homes and things like that, to the ordinances. We updated our home occupation ordinance and added that to all our residential districts. Some of our residential districts didn't even allow home occupations. That is really part of the modernization of the ordinance. We have seen how much home occupation has changed, and we tried to make that a little more inclusive. We added modern uses to many of the zoning districts, things like solar farms and brook pubs and electric vehicle charging stations, things that hadn't really been on the radar before, but, you know, we know it's where we are, and that those things are all coming. We deleted two unused districts, again, trying to simplify it as much as possible. We had a forestal district that has been on the books forever, has never been used. There was real no incentive to, to move, to zone to that. And then also Planned Office Park, there was no, no projects that were ever coming under that, and really was, there's really no incentive for that district either. A lot of the set facts were tied to roads, and there were different terms throughout the code, primary road, secondary road, different things like that, that didn't match our major thoroughfare plan. Again, we're trying to tie our comprehensive plan, our major thoroughfare plan, and everything tied to this, so we're using the same terms in all of our documents. We made a lot of those corrections. Number ten, we created a minor P O D process. This was something that was identified in the comprehensive plan of properties that are in our rural crossroads, where they may be going into an existing building. Maybe we don't want them to meet, have to meet all the subdivisions, the sort of suburban standards that a new development would have to make, so we created this process that would reduce the cost and make the approval process go quicker. We created parking standards for all uses. This is where we had to do a lot of interpretation throughout the code, throughout the development process in the last few years. We moved access management to the zoning ordinance. It's to be in a much more upfront location, so people are aware of it much earlier in the process. We created a comprehensive landscaping article. Right now, we had landscaping spread out through many sections of the code. It was confusing. Staff was actually interpreting it several, several different ways, so we simplified that process, made it easier for everybody to understand. Big one was bringing the sign ordinance into compliance with the Supreme Court ruling. That took a lot of effort. Supreme Court recently came out with a decision, I guess probably about a year ago, that rendered most sign ordinances in the country unconstitutional, because you can no longer use content-based signs, so we changed that. We clarified by the design review committees, when they were reviewing COAs. This is something we were sort of doing as a practice, but now we've codified it. And then the last chapter, we created this rules of measurement chapter that has a lot of graphics in it, and that's things like, simple questions that we often get, how do you measure lot width? How do you measure setback? How do you measure height? And it gives you all of these in that last chapter of the ordinance, and I think that will be very helpful to everyone involved. So those are some of the really good changes, I think, that this process has brought about. So now I'm going to cover the changes. So these changes have occurred from the May meetings to now, and they're grouped in orders of categories. So in the use districts, as I had mentioned previously, we deleted the term low-density residential from all of the residential districts. We don't in the statement of intent. Since we don't define this term, everybody has a different opinion of what low-density is, and we changed that with minimum lot size and density requirement, specific numbers. As I said, we added the minimum lot size in the A one and A two statement of intent. We added a few uses in the A one and A two as a byright use that came up through these conversations, the pick-your-own-farm operation. And like I said, we're trying to have a definition for every use in the ordinance, so as we added that use, we also added the definition. So the definition of pick-your-own-farm would be a farm where customers may go to pick, cut, choose their own product of the field. Examples include picking your own berries, tree fruit, pumpkins, Christmas trees, or flowers. Another use that came up through those conversations was respite care overnight, so we added that as a C U P use in the A one and A two districts. The definition of that would be a place which provides temporary institutional care of a sick elderly or disabled person, providing relief for the usual caregiver, and overnight care is permitted. Also, as a C U P use, we've added home-based business. This is actually something that was brought to us by our economic development staff. They have some people who have come to them, they have very small operations, that they're still working out of their home, however, they would like to have employees, or you may have regular hours of instruction or things like that. None of that is a byright use under the home occupation. So we added this as a C U P use, and what a home-based business would be is an occupation carried on by the owner or an occupant of a dwelling as a secondary use in connection with which there are employees, other than members of the family residing on the premises, has group instruction, or has hours that are open to the public. So since this is a little more intense, we are recommending as a C U P use so that we can determine if there's any negative impacts to the surrounding community. However, if somebody did want to have a more intense business, there is now an option that they can apply for. One of the districts, we, we, the only lot width recommendation that we're making is in the R one district. So we have three categories in the R one district. There's many different minimum lot sizes, however, the lot width is all the same for all, all the districts, so we are recommending adding additional lot width. So if you have, in the R one district, if you have lots served by public utilities, the minimum lot size is twenty-four thousand square feet and the hundred-foot lot width. That's not being changed at all. You then drop down to the bottom, if you have both private well and septic, you have to have one point five acres and a two-hundred-foot lot width. However, we had this oddity that if you only have one public utility, you only need a one-acre lot, so we are recommending a hundred-and-fifty-foot lot width, because that makes more sense with the lot size. And please stop me at any time if you have questions.
Let's go back to that if you don't mind, Mr. Chairman. So one acre, a one-acre lot, now, I'm thinking about it now as you're saying, because we talked about this before, but a one-acre lot, a hundred-and-fifty feet, seems really narrow for a one-acre lot. I mean, we're talking about long, thin lots.
I think it's primarily for the drain field of a septic system, and in Henrico, they've got, over there in Chingle and Farms, you've got like quarter-acre lots with septic systems on them. Of course, you can't repair them anymore. I think they just, they brought public utilities to all of those. Yeah. So, so if somebody's septic system goes bad, they got to cook up to, to the, to the county sewage.
And also if someone has like cul-de-sac, a cul-de-sac lot or something like that, it's harder to get the lot width.
Yeah, gotcha.
Okay.
Thanks.
In the R three district, we did add to the statement of intent some guidance for the multifamily uses. If you remember, the R three district allows duplexes and triplexes by right, and it also allows quadplexes with the C U P. But really, the statement of intent didn't really address that multifamily is allowed in there, so we're adding a statement in there that says multifamily uses are only recommended for areas that are within a village and served by public utilities, to provide some clarification of where they should be located. In the B one district, we did add a shopping center as a permitted use with design standards. It makes, seems to make sense that shopping centers are allowed in the B one commercial district, however, we would have always just considered it retail before. With these design standards, it allows some more flexibility, some reduction in parking and shared, some of the shared activities that you find in a shopping center. Again, so that's one of the things, it probably didn't highlight in front of the highlights, but we now have this new section of uses with development standards, and it refers you to the development standards. So the standards we're recommending for a shopping center is that the site shall contain at least two acres. It shall correspond with the recommendation for commercial use in the comprehensive plan. Again, we tie it to the comp plan. The uses in it should be limited to the B two uses. B two is generally things like restaurants, retail, the things you would typically see in a shopping center. The applicant shall submit a P O D that shows how is a coordinated development, the building height would be thirty-five feet unless authorized by a C U P. No building shall be closer than fifty feet from any boundary of the site. Again, so that's looking at setbacks holistically within the whole parcel, instead of trying to look at each individual and have it meet setback lines. They would be landscaping and screening would be required, the impervious coverage would be seventy percent. We reduced the parking to one rate, one space per two fifty, which is a little bit less than, than typical retail uses, because they, they're the shared parking within the shopping center. We addressed how many loading spaces they would need, signs and entrances, roadway classification, and that the whole center would either need to be under one ownership, or all the parcel owners would need to agree to the shared parking and the shared standards of the ordinance. So that's something new. Any questions on that one?
So that includes out parcels.
It would include out parcels if there was an agreement. Yes.
I'd like to go back to the R three.
Okay.
Okay, so we're saying that in the statement of intent, multifamily uses are only recommended within a village served by public utilities. Okay, that's our statement of intent. But when you look at the charts, multifamily is permitted. So I'm a developer, you're saying it's permitted. You don't recommend it, but it is permitted.
Right. So as it, as it went, if it went through a rezoning process, we would look at the statement of intent and say it's not, if it wasn't located in a village, or if there wasn't public utility, we would say it's not consistent with the intention of the zoning ordinance. But.
Currently, if it's currently zoned that way, the rezoning, yes or no, they could do this today.
Yes.
So to do anything other than that, they'd be potentially remove some byright property process.
And one of our decision.
We're not going forward.
Forward is my concern.
Right. And one of our decision points that we, when we get to after the, the list of all the changes, is going to be to talk about these quads and triplexes and all, so I don't know if we want to go back to this at that point, or.
Okay. Thank you.
Did anybody have any questions on the shopping centers before I move on? In the commercial and industrial districts, we clarified and made it very clear that if it's adjacent to agricultural or residential, there are additional landscape standards. Those are already in our code. We just made sure that that was in the chart so that they knew that there would be a landscape provision, and then if you are on municipal, you would then be able to click off of that landscape provision, and it'll show you. So, again, just trying to, to make sure people are aware of all the standards when we get going. As I spoke about earlier, we also changed all the words that, you know, collector, primary, secondary roads, to match the same terms in the comprehensive plan, and that they're consistent throughout the zoning districts. Okay, any questions before I move into signs and some of the changes we made to signs? So since the, since we presented the sign ordinance in July, we did, this also came from our economic development staff, that we added a provision that allows contractor signs during the construction process. Typically see, you know, the architect or engineer, or who's the construction builder, so that gives them now a provision to do that. The overlay district talks about raised signs. The raised signs are the sort of the pole signs that, you know, are about ten feet tall, and they have an arm, and the, the sign hangs down. However, that wasn't in the sign ordinance, so we did add that to the sign ordinance as another style of sign that somebody can choose. We did add that gas station signs can be L E D. Of course, most of them already are, but we did want to add a provision for that. And we had a discussion about this last time, if there was a distinction made between having a commercial sign and a non-commercial sign. We did remove that distinction, and every property in the county has an opportunity to have a temporary sign, so if they were going to have a non-commercial sign, it would fall under that temporary sign category. And then a decision point that's going to come up again later in the conversation is what we do about electric message, electronic message signs, and that'll be one of our decision points as well. Anybody have questions on signs? Okay, landscaping, we added a section for credits for saved existing landscaping. Ideally, we would like them to preserve trees and save existing mature trees. We added provision that it's a like-for-like. If somebody, you know, saves a six-inch caliber tree, it reduces their planting requirements by six inches caliber, and they would, they would have to protect that during the construction to make sure it's, lives. In the overlay district, we clarified that landscaping is in addition to the underlying zoning. Again, that's what it's always been, just, just clarifying that. We did clarify that signs with new construction would be reviewed as part of the C O A. However, if it's an existing sign face that they're just changing out because the business has changed, they would not require a C O A. Parking, we did add two new categories to parking that had, both of these had come up during the citizen meetings for neighborhood clubhouses. We are having two subdivisions built now with neighborhood clubhouses, and we'll probably see some more in the future, one space per five hundred square feet. Also, the postal service is now requiring close, cluster mailboxes for most subdivisions, so we are. Um so we are saying if they have sixteen or more lots, they do have to have two spaces. Um and that is seems to be a national standard now. P O D, uh we changed the submittal requirement from one inch to a hundred to one inch to fifty. This is typically what we get. Um it just wasn't picked up the first time through. And that we added to the submittal requirements, um them to provide locations of loading and unloading areas. Lighting, um we did add that flags can have light shine directly on them, but they do have to be shielded. So they would still be dark sky compliant, uh but they do not have to have downward light. They can have up light that's shielded. And this is a something that we added, it's a pretty significant change that we've added. Um so, like I said, we moved the access management um to the zoning ordinance. Um the access man- management currently says basically everything requires turn lanes. Um we've had talked to the board about a year and a half ago about adopting a turn lane policy for some of our smaller subdivisions, because right now our policy is just right or left turns for everything. That may be, you know, a bit excessive for smaller subdivisions and maybe not really required. So, um we were waiting till after the major thoroughfare plan was adopted, um some of the language ties to the comprehensive plan. So, uh the turn lane policy that we would be asking you to consider is that, one, commercial and industrial development, the turn lanes would be required by Virginia Department of Transportation. We wouldn't be involved in that. If if VDOT says they need them, they would have to provide them. Um but for major subdivisions, um all entrances onto major and minor arterial and collector roads that are identified in the comprehensive plan shall provide right and left turn lanes. These are all on our major roads. These are the roads that we would want people to be able to pull off easily and so the through traffic can continue. Um subdivisions that exit onto a local road, not internal to the development, um say another section of the same development, and they have more than thirty lots, a right turn lane shall be provided. So say you have a, um you know, major, a major road that runs through, say like, um I'm trying to think of an example. It may be mosaic, which is has that one long road through. If they were gonna add another section, there may want to be considerations for right turn lanes um for some of those major roads. Um and then subdivisions with more than forty lots and the speed limit on the existing local road um is forty-five or greater, a left turn would be required in addition to the right turn lane. So these would be our standards. However, um oh, and then there's standards if there's a median. Um so if there's a entrance, shall be designed to align with the median. Um and if they the cannot align, then they would have to do a left turn lane. The left turn lane could be waived by the Director of Clean Development. Uh so this would be our policy. However, we always wanna give the board the way, the right to to waive the requirement or ability for someone to ask for a waiver. Um so through a rezoning, a conditional use permit, the board could waive the requirement. Um and the factors that would be considered of any waiver would be the site distance, road alignment and grade changes, uh frequency of rear end crashes along the road, traffic volumes, um speed limits. And recommendation was just delete what the speed limit is, just have speed limit um and the capacity analysis of the receiving roadway. So basically, what what this now sets up as a standard is that anything, you know, with forty more lots, it is an automatic right or left turn lane. Um if you're less than that, it sort of depends on where the road is located of whether you would need a turn lane.
Mr. Chairman, do we define local road?
Yes, that is that is defined in the um major thoroughfare.
Chairman, quick question. Going back to the credit, you had credits for trees and shrubs.
Yes.
What, why would you need to do that? I'm trying to get an idea of what circumstances they had come up.
Um it's as we went through the comprehensive plan, we came in with a list of all the things that we wanted to implement through the comprehensive plan. One of those was preservation of existing trees. Um so that would be an incentive for somebody to preserve a tree.
Gotcha. So, so we, I read the section and it seems to be pretty clear that somebody can't try to take a credit for a shrub or tree that's not in the designated area.
Right.
It's a little fuzzy, but um it just says existing landscaping is adequately protected during construction can be used as a credit. But then I looked, and so it sounds like you have two types of landscaping. You have a buffer along roadway and access, and then you have parking lot, parking lots. So obviously, you're comfortable with that, the idea is, because I'm thinking, yeah, if there was an existing tree now, we weren't making somebody plant another one, were we?
Right.
So they were kind of getting a credit already.
So the way the code was written now, it was almost impossible for anybody to meet it. It basically said in setback areas, you could not remove any tree six-inch caliber or greater. Nobody could meet that standard because of the way grading occurs. Even if they did keep those trees, they would die because the way the site is graded. So this is a way of trying to get people to preserve trees in an area that would be protected.
Gotcha. Because I'm thinking, if I could leave a tree in a place, I wouldn't knock it down if I could have to plant another one.
Right.
So I didn't quite understand why, but I see what you're saying. It's just it's just a way to try to encourage.
So the carrot, the stick, and if you keep that tree, it's.
Of course, if they kept, they would maybe get credit, they would get credit in the sense that they don't need to replace something that's already there. So anyway, I.
Yeah, that's a really good point. You're making some of the points of this.
They're saying, yeah, they say on the same topic, what if the tree dies?
Exactly, it's the same thing.
Because I've got an example because there's a wall we're being built in in Henrico at Paramount Three Shop. And they had to, uh the the ruling was you must preserve all the trees between the store and the neighbors. They've cut the trees, so they're big trees, so I know they're gonna die. There are the trees there and then they just cut to dig out the lot right up to the edge. I mean, some of those trees have trunked this big and they have about that much land, all the rest is gone. And they're gonna, they're supposed to put up a concrete wall there. What happens when those trees die?
So we do have a maintenance provision in the landscaping ordinance, so they do have to maintain those trees. If that large tree is dies, it'll be on the P O D that it was a ten-inch tree or a six-inch tree and they were giving credits for that, they would have to plant.
Equal amount to.
Equal amounts, so it would be, they're not planting another ten-foot caliber tree, but they need to do five two-inch caliber trees, so.
How how long after this phase has been the talks with that coming into play? I mean, five years down the road, they still have to do it?
Yes, it continues forever. Because otherwise, I've had somebody come by and literally wipe out all of their shopping center, literally wipe out all the trees at the at the, you know, between the sidewalk and the road because they didn't feel like they were getting enough visual. They're there to provide that buffer. It's not a buffer we ever want to have gone.
I guess they'd be, they'd be required to replace it if VDOT took a two-lane road and made it a four-lane road and wiped all that out. Through no fault of the landowner. We'd have to come back and plant another hole.
They'll have damages from VDOT for that loss. Condemnation is required.
Yeah, VDOT added a, where they had a fence when they straightened the road. They, VDOT provided a whole new fence in front of the park.
They're not providing a fifty-foot strip of woods. And because now maybe it's encroaching on the park, so of shopping center.
But they do have to compensate them for what they're being damaged, which is if those woods are wrong. Yeah, then then they'll have to compensate the landowner to be able to replace the amount of landscaping. Just like Joanda said, if a ten-inch tree dies, we obviously don't get a ten-inch tree back, but we might get five two-inch trees. So whatever it is the property owner would have to do to then meet the landscaping, that's measure of VDOT's damages for having taken the space.
But right now, they would be required to do five two-inch trees. We're saying they got a ten-inch, so they get to the credit for that. And then they would go back, something happened to it, winter could happen, whatever. They go back to the original, the law to would be the original.
Sounds like the landowner has to warranty, warranty the trees for a long, very long time.
The buffer.
Yeah, indefinitely. I mean, trees die, but it's just, yeah.
And it's just the one that they're getting credit for. So any new tree that they plant, it's a part of their thing. If that dies, then they would just replace it with a a new two-inch caliber tree. It's not, it's not at the, you know, what it was when it died. So, but yeah, I mean, if there's a buffer or a tree requirement, you want them to always have those trees.
Trying to revision and development where they put in a McDonald's or bucket and then they have this giant tree that they destroyed, the root structure, it's dying, it's about to fall over. I mean, the liability of the cars and the, maybe developers do that, maybe they know darn well it's gonna fall over or, you know, die in a windstorm and lose the root structure. But that's their, I guess that's their call, yeah. But if it does happen, then it basically is just no different than if they came in and took it down at the beginning.
Right, or if a regular tree died.
It's no different. You might as well, you're in there with vehicles moving around, you're losing liability. I mean, I.
May as well take it out again. There's really no incentive to keep an original tree.
No real incentive.
Just plant the one that's under warranty anyway.
Right.
I think site, site design is gonna dictate most of that, you know, as to whether or not it works to keep the natural habitat or to provide your own.
And it takes by the checks.
The the landowner.
Yes, yes, I think so, okay.
Any more questions before we move to the turn, is turn lane policy on that? So are we are okay with that language?
I'm striking the forty-five under that tree credit.
Are we done? Tree credit? Everybody okay with the tree credit language?
When you say credit, you mean credit in in kind?
Yes, one for one.
I think the concept makes sense. You wanna keep what's there disturbed as little as possible.
That makes sense.
But you're not, but you're not getting credit.
It's not really, well.
It's an in-kind credit.
It is, because you're not having to replace.
There's no money.
You're not having to, you're not having to replace what you didn't tear down.
You're not forcing them to provide new buffer if they're natural.
It's really very.
I think that's a, now you pretty much are made to put in a new buffer even if you already have one, so.
So. I think I'm with you, I'm going to, I'm going to, I mean, you have warranty trees in here and there.
Which is why it was so hard to to enforce that that original provision we had was not.
Right.
Um so I went through the turn lane policy, maybe I went a little too fast. So the recommendation would be to, on number four, to take out the speed, the speed limit number, just say speed limits would be a factor. But is everybody comfortable with that turn lane policy? Okay, great. Uh definitions of changes, we added condominiums and for fam- family day homes, well, removed the hours of operation. That was similar to a change we made to childcare. Um and then, like I said, we com- last time, we didn't really have this completed yet, but we had the um the completed the rules of measurement, measurement chapter. And in that chapter, you have a section on lot, lot types and yards. How do you measure lot width? How do you measure setbacks? Um where accessory structures can be located? Uh when is a accessory structure attached or detached? Uh we clarified building projections. Um we're now allowing a three-foot building protection, which is something that we've been asked to to look at for a long time. How do you measure height? How do you measure floor area ratio? How you calculate open space and how do you determine the site distance triangle? So we did both a a written and a visual graphic. So some people like the the written word, some people prefer graphic. Um but I think the that that chapter will help a lot of answer a lot of questions for people. So if any, if anybody have any questions on the changes that we've made in terms of the, what we've, comments we've gotten back so far or any concerns with any of the changes?
Uh I had mentioned this before because it kind of drives drives me nuts. We talk about the si- minimum lot size and we mix acres and square feet. And I know there's forty-three thousand five sixty square feet an acre, but I mean, can we include that maybe in that last section?
We can add that.
Um because I'm just thinking, well, I I have to stop and think, wait, what, how much is that? What size is that? And I think in acres, because everything else is in acres. So we mix and imagine.
Yeah, that'd be a good thing to add to that section. Glad to do that. And we could probably do a graphic too. All right, is everybody ready to to tackle the hard stuff, decision points?
Oh, that wasn't the hard stuff already?
Forty-five minutes in, so we only got a few hours left.
That's enough time for this till now, it's not.
Okay. So the first one deals with lot sizes, density, that sort of thing. So again, you have to to bear in mind that when we started this process, we started with the zoning district.
Or whatever, whatever the board confused on size. Then we're gonna be operating on two sets. If you follow that all, that logic all the way through, we're operating on two sets of of zoning ordinance stuff. I don't think, I don't think that's required, and I don't think we should do that. But I do understand the reluctance to take away what somebody made you see as, you know, I bought this land knowing I could do this.
I don't think I would be comfortable in taking away what they thought they had. I mean, I think that's a, is a basic.
But I mean, putting a C, particularly putting a CUP, I mean, to me, that would be a consideration. You know, I could have done this ten years ago. When I bought the land ten years ago, I could have done this by right. Now you want me to do a CUP? Well, I mean, I think that's a fact, we were taking into consideration the CUP. I'm just wary of having two sets of rules if we if we roll our sleeves up in it in two years from now and say we really wanna pull this apart and redo it. How are we gonna do that without taking away or giving some rights in the way we're describing?
Well, I think, I mean, the difference is these, these folks have property, these folks have properties with a certain amount of rights, and we're gonna take some of those rights away.
Yeah, there's the problem.
That's the way.
That's the problem.
Then 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 we won't be able to redo our zoning ordinance in two years.
I don't know, maybe give them more rights.
No, we just leave those, those stay R three. We could have a new R, R five, R ten, whatever. But that R three would stay as of prior to January first, twenty twenty.
So like I said, we will be then working with two sets.
We have all the grandfather zoning.
So if you look at.
Plenty of grandfather stuff.
Yeah, like.
If you look at the R P U D district, uh we changed the setbacks like in twenty twelve or twenty thirteen. And there's two setbacks. If if you were rezoned prior to this date, you made these setbacks. If you were after twenty twelve, twenty thirteen, you're you're subject to these setbacks. Um so we do have some precedent. I think when we look at our residential strategy, it's going to be a comp plan thing. So we're gonna be looking at changes to our comp plan density. We may be tweaking or creating new districts um with out of that process.
One of the things that I was looking at when we were considering the Tocco Ho Bridge project was the R R zoning. Uh the R R zoning today requires five acres or more. Um but if you look at those neighborhoods near Tocco Ho Bridge, they're all on two acre lots. So if we, so we obviously grandfather, and some of those lots that are not built on yet are two acres, but they can be built on even though it's R R, and today it requires five acres.
You're not taking away from anyone who already has their rights.
Correct.
The rules are changing, so you would have to, and it's gonna, it might change in the future. But I would say that you're protecting those which already have the zone and you're giving a heads up for those who may look to rezone as to what the rules of engagement are.
I don't think we can be sort of afraid to go forward and try and do stuff to these areas, you know what I'm saying?
I mean, that's what I'm worried. I don't wanna say, don't wanna feel like our hands are completely tied. So so we could all land on on this thing, just no change in right of right? Or do you wanna, I think we're landing on one CUP for rezoning applications after the ordinance passes.
For two and three.
Anybody that's R three now correctly has has the right by right uses that they've had before this ordinance changed.
That's sort of the consensus, I mean, right?
I think it's change the two and three to a CUP.
It's not a legal requirement, it's legally permissible.
But the legal side is, if nobody has done anything, if they're sitting on land, R three, they haven't taken any other step other than buying the land, they haven't taken any step to do any kind of development, then.
Then they're not vested in everything that they're currently allowed to do.
They're not vested in the R three, all by right.
Legally, legally you can take your rights away.
Yeah, but, but, again, you're allowed to give them more than your legally required.
Thank you.
I'm not a lawyer. The lawyer trying to hire a lawyer.
Try to break it down.
When that's your guy talking to a lawyer, right? No idea, like, like. One other thing maybe we can consider, I don't know if this is like legal to do. We could say if it's only one two-family dwelling or only one three-family, can we do that? No, okay, no. That that would be permitted, and anything up more than that would be a CUP. I'm just trying to take that one little two-family duplex from going through that whole CUP process.
It'd be the same rules for everyone.
Okay, I'm, I'm just trying to, I'm trying to make cake and eat it too.
They, they don't, they don't have the time, now, okay. So for something like that, it'd be.
All right, so, so the consensus is that we will do, um, a, add a new provision for duplexes and triflexes that are developed after the date of an ordinance would require a CUP.
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, see, lots of nodding heads, all right. Great, so now we get to move to the next one. Um, the next one deals with accessory apartments. Um, we have probably had eight or so applications this year for accessory apartments. Uh, it's currently a CUP use. Um, one thought was if we, we always have these consistently coming before us, we've never denied one. We, we have yet to have any, um, violations with any of them or any complaints. Um, do we want to treat them similar to short-term rentals? Which, what we did with the short-term rentals is if it was located in the house where there's, you know, you're, you're less likely to, to have some, something wayward going on if it's in your home. Um, but if it's detached in a detached garage, would you wanna see a CUP for that? Um, and the ones that are attached could be by right with the development standards, and the development standards would be the same that we do for our, just standard conditions of our conditional use permit. Um, one issue is this could help with some affordability. Um, it would allow people to have, you know, apartments, garage apartments and things like that, which, you know, could encourage some, some affordable ho- housing options in the county.
Are the standards and things like the fam- it's family members?
So the standards are, you know, that it can't be rented, it has to be family members. Um, they have to have a fire and smoke alarm, that, those sorts of safety things.
We've had quite a few in-law suites this past year.
Yes, I think we've had a few.
Yes.
Yeah, hopefully as long as I've been on the commission without return on that.
Yep.
Yeah.
But you're still out to go to meetings.
There's been quite a bit of community support within the neighborhoods or, or the adjoining property owners that have come out and spoken support of the applicants. It's been very well received.
Yes.
So, um, the question is, is should all of them be treated the same way? Is it different to you if it's, if it's, you know, a ten-acre parcel and it's back in the woods or?
I could support both.
I think if they all come through the CUP process, it does the ability to have more, uh, policing efforts to make sure that everything is at least there, having to agree.
This would be without.
Well, that's, you know, that's a good point. Is there a way to monitor them in some way without a CUP?
Yeah.
Do we even know that they exist?
We could, with a short-term rental, require a registration process.
We have a state law authority for that.
Yeah.
Well, don't they have to get a building permit if they're building an extra building or converting like a garage or something?
If they're doing that, they might, but I think, and I have Gary here, I think you could actually do an in-law suite without necessarily having to get a building permit.
Whenever you have a, a, a range or a range hookup that requires, that's what we consider the second dwelling, yeah, so.
And when you talk about being detached, how many of your eight are in-home or, or in any structure? So if it was a, over the garage?
I think they're probably generally about half and half.
Yeah.
But in any condition, the, the development standards is we're gonna require that it be a family member.
But again, if you don't know about it, it's, it is harder to enforce that.
CUP.
We had at least two in the last year that were detached.
Typically, you don't have, if they're misbehaving, you're gonna have neighbors report them. If they're not misbehaving, then you have to ask yourself, does it matter to you? If they're not having any impact on the neighborhood any different than all the other single-family homes, does it matter?
Does it matter?
If they're having a different impact, then the neighbors are gonna let you know. And that's what you're gonna find out.
I think there's two questions here. Do you want to keep this as a CUP use? Or do you want it to go by right with standards? And then the second question, if you do by right with standards, does it matter whether it's attached or detached? So probably should talk about the first question first.
CUP for all, keep it simple.
I think some of the feedback we've had was almost the opposite.
Okay.
You know, most of the homeowners that are coming through here don't really understand the development process, and to go have community meetings, public, two different public hearings, pay the associated fees, they felt like it was a little cumbersome.
Yeah, it could be.
And so I, I think that's what prompted this one to be a question of if, if there was a comfort level, and that's why we have it framed in the, in this discussion with these bodies, if there was a comfort level, that would reduce the burdens on those individuals. Now, by right, obviously shifts that ability to monitor, um, as much as we would with a CUP and have conditions. And so it's, and they would have development standards and they have to live up to those. But that was, I think, what prompted this one coming through in the first place.
Especially because they never say no.
And we never say no.
So you've gotten, you're, you're proving the exact same conditions every time, and you don't say no. It's a standardization there.
So if you framed it, then we ought to ask, answer the second question, or you put the questions in order that we've attached and, attached and sep- uh, separate, the second question. But I, I would support, whatever, we do treat them the same, because that just makes it seem to be easier. But why would there be a diff- why would we worry about, why would we want, just help me understand why would we care whether it's attached or not?
I guess you could have, if you had a ten-acre lot, you could create your own mini subdivision. Just a little house here, a little house here, a little house here. It'd be all family-related, so maybe it's a family compound.
It's all a family.
Family compound. So I, Brewer could do that.
Yeah, but, I mean, except, but, you know, like, you know, some of those family compounds never stay family compounds. You know, it's like the, the division that the family has, and you may do something like that where you have the in-law suite. Well, let's say your in-laws, you're no longer getting along with, or your, your wife or your husband or whatever, and there's this, there's a separation, you know, of, of, of family, it, it changes. And then subsequent property owners, you know, with the CUP, you have all of that. There is the burden upon the applicant to go through that process, but it is the same for everyone. And it gives an opportunity for neighbors to, you know, be a support or opposition of, whereas if it's by right or permitted, in one way or the other, like you, like John said, I think if, if, the rules need to be the same regardless. It's, it's fair for the applicant. It is a laborious process. That's, that's my two cents. The CUP allows input from the neighbors, and it protects their property too. If for some reason there's a, you know, this perception that it would devalue their property by having this crazy in-law suite into their, in their neighborhood. It gives the county more, I guess, policing.
Yeah, I guess I share some of John's thoughts, which is what's our return on investment here? We spent a lot of time on it, we used a lot of money on it. Um, and what's our return in terms of the value add through that process? If we just say yes to everything, can we standardize in some fashion? Save all that time, effort and energy and direct it toward more productive, more differentiated. Now, some valid points have been raised, and what if somebody builds twenty of these? Well, can we legally limit this to one?
Yes.
Um, we've talked about building several, can, can this be existing conversion of existing space? Like improving an attic, improving a garage space, but not building a village of? Because at some point, if they build something separate for a single family, it becomes a tiny home, right? We have restrictions on tiny homes. So, if, if, if we, I, I think there's some valid, so when our development standards, if it's, if it's family, if they're not building a compound, if they're just converting space. I mean, there must be some way for us to get out of some of this, without putting us at risk or exposing us, 'cause the return on investment here is very minimal. To go to the community meeting, I mean, anyway, that's, that's my.
How many of those have we had in twenty, let's say, twenty eighteen, do we, do we recall?
I think we had seven or eight this year. I didn't go back and account, count, but it's been several.
What kind of conditions do we put on them, refresh them, what kind of?
Uh, the conditions are that they have to be, um, a family member, they cannot rent it, they have to have a smoke and fire alarm, they have to be able to have fire access.
Depose structures too.
Yeah, depose structures.
So, can you put that into development standards?
Yes, that's what we do.
So, so the, so the CUP conditions we're putting are really just nothing other than repeating the development standards.
In the development standard, just to refresh, um, if the septic is approved for four people, they can't have ten people who are in HSTAs. So, if you're building a home, you're gonna build a septic to conform with the number of bedrooms, and if they wanna add additional apartments, it's gotta be supported by, by the, uh, infrastructure. So that's a, that's a fairly significant commitment of, of resources to build either a second or convert, and add septic capacity, because where a lot of these are, is on the.
We have, uh, one.
Standards now, is that?
Yeah, one.
One of the one in my neighborhood, they were limited to where they could place it, because of where the septic is.
There you go.
And so, so there are already a lot of limits. But I think it'd be, maybe if we, if we said one such on a property without a CUP. Um, I think that's what I kept hearing is why do I have to go through this?
That's what I hear.
I'm not a professional, so they have a, one person in our neighborhood had a, a community meeting. Nobody came, 'cause they had already been approved by the HOA, and they had, they had catered the event. So they spent a lot of money and, and.
Somebody must've showed up, you knew.
I showed up.
He showed up.
Pretty cool, and I can.
That's a white line, and that's a reason to keep it in one.
So how does a homeowner know? Okay, so I'm buying a piece of property, it's got a home on it, it's got a garage that I'm thinking, boy, my in-laws could live up there, an attic or whatever, and I went, how do they even know to ask?
Uh, tips, sometimes we find out because they've submitted a building permit.
Okay.
And then we say, nope, you have to get a CUP.
Right.
Um, but a savvy person who's buying a piece of property would come and say, I'd like to do this, is it permitted? That doesn't mean everybody follows the rules and does that, but that's what we, we count on.
Is there any way to expedite that process for this particular application this evening? So we can fast track?
Yeah, the way with our, our advertising and our, you know, the way our planning commission and then board meetings fall, so.
'Cause I thought about that too. Could we?
Yeah, the only thing is.
Make it fly slow or something, but then we lose the money.
You could make this a special exception, which only goes to the BZ, I mean, only goes to the board of supervisors.
Um, the other thing I was thinking about is we currently today have the condition that if you transfer ownership of the property, you have to let us know and let, and let them know about the, the conditions. I, I would think that we actually could fashion that into the, and Joanne, I, I'm making this up as I go along, so of course I'm checking with Joanne as I'm saying it, but, yeah, I think it's possible that we could require notification of the use, and then again, notification of us upon transfer, so that we make sure any new owner understands the limits. And that would be one way.
Certain clients.
It's a, it's a, it's a compliance that you.
That they.
Just certify as your compliance.
They don't have to do that every time. I mean, businesses and things like that do that, but residences do not.
So in this case, we're not asking them to say, okay, I'm gonna improve my apartment, my garage, and I'm gonna meet all these development standards, and I have a, since I meet the standards, I just wanna do it, and then, okay, I just wanna clarify the process for them. They don't need to certify through compliance for development standards.
Do you wanna write up what, what we all said? And then, and then will I take another whack at it?
Okay.
Highlight it, make sure that's the section.
Yeah, exactly.
Okay, all right. If everybody's okay, can we just take a quick break, maybe ten minutes? That's a lot anyways.
Yeah, we got plenty.
Okay, everybody ready to, to click back on, let's get Lisa.
Well, that's not true, because you, you get it back.
Okay.
And the bartenders are crushed.
Just to give you some, some timeframe of where we are, uh, we had six decision points to get through. We have gotten through three of them, so we have three more left. Um, and then we'll have, um, a review of the remaining schedule, um, and then, I don't know if the drivers, if there'll be any public comment as well. So, that we're probably about halfway through. Um, so the next issue is, uh, electronic message board signs. Um, and other than density and lot size, this is probably the, um, area that we've had the most comments on. Um, we've have, have had several churches, um, express to us who desire to have electric message board signs. The fire stations have indicated they would like it. Um, the schools have talked to us through the. I'm nine cola.
Oops, I'm sorry.
Um, so what is an electric message board sign? So it's an EMC or an LED sign that can display words, symbols, figures or images that can be electronically changed by remote or automatic means.
We picked it up.
Um, why people like them is that they don't require onsite labor to change the message. Uh, they have a longer service life. Those, uh, plastic letters often crack and break. Um, and you can also have multiple messages in the same sign. So, um, some of the complaints or concerns that we've had, heard from people who don't think, uh, these signs are appropriate, and that may be not appropriate in our villages, are that they're, they're gonna be too bright, they're too intrusive, it would not fit in with our character, um, and that it leads to driver distraction. So, um, considering all of these things, these were the regulations that I thought we should consider as part of our, our development of this ordinance. Um, do we want these as a by-right use or a CUP use? Um, are there appropriate locations where we'd have these? Controls on brightness, uh, how much of the sign area can be used for the message? Do we want them to be dimmed after certain hours? How often the message can change? And how does the message change?
Where is that in up then?
This is just my part of the presentation.
Okay, so there's nothing about signs in here at all?
Yes, it is.
Yeah, you gave us a handout, you handed us.
Four, six, oh, you have it on that chart?
Uh, no, you have the.
Four sixteen is the section.
You also gave us a chart when you walked in.
Yes. Uh, so section four sixteen, and it's all in order, so you should be able to go, it's under the development standard, which is the yellow tab. You should be able to go to four sixteen fairly easily as by right. So these are the standards that I'm gonna review with you. Um, so we did, uh, like we always do, we benchmarked, um, other localities. Um, so that is the chart that's handed out. I am gonna have it on the screen, but I knew it was probably gonna be too small for you to read it, um, because I, I wanted you to be able to see all the localities in, under the same formula. So if you would refer to your, uh, chart that was passed out, um, this afternoon. So, um, what, most surprising thing is that what we found out is we, we benchmarked Hamrico, Hanover, Powhatan, Flavana, Albemarle, New Kent and Louisiana. So amongst all of our rural, uh, surrounding jurisdictions and, um, Hamrico and Hanover, everybody allows LED signs by right, other than Albemarle, and they require a specialty use permit. So we are the only, um, county in the area that does not allow these electric, electronic message board signs. I was very surprised by that. Um, I think it's just an example of how technology has changed and, and more of a desire and more of a need for these type of signs. So those areas that I had identified of what we wanted to consider, or what we may wanna consider as part of our regulations, um, not everybody, uh, can, can, does all of those, um, regulations or has those, but what we could, we did benchmark what they have. Um, so in terms of locations, if there's a blank, that means they don't have any restrictions on locations. Um, you can see that, um, Hanover allows it anywhere, but in commercial areas, they, they have larger, they can be larger and bigger. Um, in Powhatan, they only allow them on lots running on Route sixty, and you have to rezone commercial, industrial or RC. Um, and Flavana, they specifically say it's not allowed in residential districts, but it's allowed in commercial and industrial districts. Uh, if you look at, at controls on brightness, um, Hamrico does a half a foot candle from the property line. Uh, if you look at, at controls on brightness, um, Hemariko does a half a foot candle from the property line. Uh, that's a, that's a known factor in the county, that is what our existing lighting standard is, so that's what I'm recommending as part of, of this one. In terms of locations, um, my recommendation is to allow these electronic message boards by right with, with development standards. Uh, if you can't meet the development standards, you can get a CUP. Uh, but we are doing, I recommended them for the agricultural districts, business districts, and the industrial districts. Um, the reason why I did the agricultural district is because that's where you typically have churches, some of our fire stations, and our schools. So, the controls on brightness, my recommendation is a half a foot at the property, um, line, which is already our standard. Um, do we want them dimmed after certain hours? This is a requirement right now in our overlay district only for the center bill. Um, both Hanover and Havana had requirements that they did have to be dimmed, um, at the time of close of business, um, or Hanover was after eleven PM. How often do the sign changes? So, this deals with the driver distraction, so if, if the sign is scrolling or changing, you know, people have a tendency to sort of watch it and they, they want to read the whole sign. So, yes, so what our, our standard states is that you can, there's no scrolling, no animation, no videos, it's just text. And that text, uh, has to go, can only be changed every minute. So, you can see, this is sort of all over the board, the minute I picked, just because it was sort of in between. Um, so Hemariko has it that, um, in business and industrial districts can only change once every ten seconds. However, um, if it's in any of the other zoning districts, like their ag or, or residential districts, it's once every five minutes. Hanover is a thirty second interval, Powhatan is a three minute, three minute interval, and then Louisa was a five second cycle. So, sort of a minute seemed to be sort of a, a middle ground. I'm not wed to that, if somebody thinks it should be thirty seconds, please do.
You said a minute.
I said a minute, yes. How do you change the message is also ties into the driver's distraction. Uh, you know, again, if it's that scrolling or if it's blinking and it switches. Um, so what my recommendation was is that it, it either has to immediately change the message, it can't be scrolling or anything, or it needs to go black and then to a new message. Hemariko does not allow transitions that stimulate motion video or animation. Hanover is no flashing or scrolling or dissolving to, to change the graphic, it must even, must immediately go black or the immediate message. Um, so that's sort of the language that I use for ours. Another question is how much of the sign area can be attributed to the, um, a lot of electronic message board? Hanover did no more than fifty percent. Powhatan had three lines of, of text, um, and, uh, Havana has twenty-eight square feet unless it was in the sign crossroads and then you put to forty percent. I did not put a, um, size requirement, but that is a standard that we may want to consider. Um, and then there's some miscellaneous, um, standards that, you know, everybody, everybody has something a little bit different. So, that's the benchmarking and then based on that.
Okay, yes.
My proposal was to allow them again in the ag, commercial, and industrial with the following standards. And then if you can't meet the standards, it would be a CUP.
There's one right there as well.
So, the general requirements would be, um, the freestanding sign may include an electronic message center. If pro, if property is zoned agricultural, business, or industrial. Just to give you an example, a, a property in, say, the center rail district, um, has a maximum sign height of ten feet and the sign area is a maximum fifty square feet. So, that just gives you an idea of what the sign area could be. Um, building and electrical permits and inspections would be required. Um, the sign cannot be located in a manner which would cause confusion with or the form of traffic signals. Uh, messages must be static, no animation, videos, flashing, or scrolling text is permitted. So, you could either have text or you can have an image, you know, you can have a hamburger or three ninety-nine, uh, but that would be on for three minutes. I mean, I'm sorry, a minute, and then that would immediately go away and another message could come on.
With fries.
With fries, yes, and then a coke next.
Is there a way to go back if you don't mind?
Sure, uh-huh.
All right, so we're talking freestanding. If it's agricultural, business, or industrial. So, Centerville along Broad Street would be business.
Yes.
Help me out with, uh, remember about Dover Hall?
Uh, Dover Hall is zone A two, so if they wanted to have an electronic message board with this, under this provision, it would be permitted.
What about the church on Sandy Hook Road?
Is it Louisa?
Oh. I'm always thinking, okay.
I got that answer down pat.
I think everybody in the room answered the question.
I think it's a good question in the context of it, that sign would not be permitted under this. That would have to get a CUP to be considered. Cause that sign has moving, I mean, it's almost like up on a TV screen sometimes.
And be approved.
Yeah, right, so it would, that particular type of sign would need a CUP. But something more, not necessarily exactly like the community college would be one of the kinds of signs here. It wouldn't be able to move as quickly as the community college sign, but that kind of sign could be approved.
Are these temporary signs also? Are we addressing temporary signs like the, the one that was thrown here, Patterson, that was advertised and, you know, need CDL drives?
That's, yeah, no, that's not in this, yeah, not in this. This is just. Um, and just, cause somebody had asked, the agricultural district, the maximum sign area is thirty-two square feet. So, Dover Hall or church in the ag area could have one of these signs at thirty-two square feet.
See, I didn't mean to pick on Dover Hall, everybody loves Dover Hall. D-Run Hunt Club, I mean, Country Club, there are a lot of properties interspersed and shuffled at the deck in residential areas. So, it's not as clear as it can't go on a residential area, but next door is not a residential area. So, that's where I need to understand how that would work because I'm not, if the intent is to kind of keep it out of residential and put it where the business and commercial is, we may not be getting there with this like.
One of the things we talked about was the possibility that in an agricultural district, it would be permitted by right with a public assembly use.
Right, and which Dover Hall or any of those would be as the, the public assembly use.
All those, and, and I don't think that language is quite matches exactly what you're.
So, we couldn't say it's okay for a church, but not okay for Dover Hall.
But you could say it's okay.
I mean, he's not saying that.
For public use, but it wouldn't necessarily be allowed. And, and we could include in that agritourism type things as well, but it means that somebody who literally just has their house on an agricultural parcel wouldn't put up an EMC sign.
What do you mean they wouldn't?
If you made it, if you made it in agricultural only if there is a.
Public assembly.
Public assembly, public assembly or agritourism.
If you had the, pick your own freezer.
I was saying the same thing.
Or, or your vegetable stain, could you not have signed up? They're saying this is what's fresh today.
That's public.
Agricultural.
Again, that, that's what we're talking about, allowing, do you want to, we, instead of all agricultural, which you could do right now, that's how Joanne's drafted it. You could limit it a little bit more to public assembly or agritourism uses on agricultural and sort of just leave out.
Then it would just go away with not having it on a residence that's on land same day, right?
That's right.
Now, there's another option, so, so what I was presenting to you was that this would be a by right use with development standards. However, the, the board and the planning commission may want to consider that, that they don't like this as a by right use and that it should be a CUP use. So, there may be some, you might want to tell us how comfortable you are with this being a by right use before we go through all these standards. Uh, if it was a CUP use, we would incorporate these standards into a CUP. Um, and something additional depending on where the parcel's located and what's around it.
I mean, I think you're in the, if you're on the right track, it's the unintended consequences of this trying to addition, you know, what could happen again. Like, we're all thinking, okay, well, this is appropriate for a bank in Centerville or it's appropriate for a church in, you know, Gum Springs, but there's a lot of things in between. I'm not sure if fully developed, we're all thinking.
Right, and another option is, is perhaps in the commercial and industrial districts, it's by right, but with the ag district, then you require a CUP or something along those lines.
That would be more.
Yeah, West Creek, M one, something like that, industrial parks, it goes by right fine, but you start to migrate out of those and you get into more of an excuse area.
I would be more on that line, maybe, you know.
So, there's, so I guess there's a couple of different decision points, should they all be CUPs? Should you do by right for all or do you want to sort of do a mix? By right if you're zoned commercial or industrial and a CUP for agricultural properties? And then you would have that, you'd be able to determine whether it was an appropriate location and an appropriate use.
Yeah, I mean, M one, E three maybe, I don't know, some by right where, cause if you're zoned B three, it's probably, it's an intense use, there's not a lot around it. But, I don't know, and then, yeah, agricultural by right or CUP, maybe that's the right way to go with that. Yeah, I'm open to those kind of things where you say, this clearly is okay, but this, this is not as clear.
I'll, I'll come back to that.
So, so I guess for me, I'm thinking, you know, we say we want to be, to keep the county rural.
Exactly.
Uh, and lights make it maybe less rural looking, right? But then we're going to discriminate against rural at having a light. And it could be agri, agribusiness, it could be a farm, a pick your own, and now they're going to have to come in for a CUP.
It's fair to the money.
And the businesses, which is not part of being rural necessarily, we're letting them do it by right.
Still has to go through the design process, right?
Uh, so, if, if, if it's in the overlay district, it would still get a CUP, COA. When we review a building permit, if it was a by right use, we would review the building permit, see if it's in accordance with the standards.
All right, well, here's another approach, perhaps we can phase this in, do it by right, West Creek, CUP, everywhere else, and then we see what comes in. Cause once you, I mean, we don't have any right now.
Right.
There might be a lot of people out there that want this, we just don't know who they are, where they want to put them, what they want to do. So, maybe you phase it in gradually and say, all CUP initially maybe, and then find out what comes in and what's a no brainer. Maybe we can develop some design standards, get those adopted, so you know it's a little bit more by right. Cause once you go by right, you're never going to pull it back.
So, you need by its time.
So, you need by a little time, so you can then start to get a feel for it and then start to relax and shift a little bit more toward by right over time. I, it's actually a phased approach, but right now I don't think we know what we don't know.
Remember we did on accessory use.
Are you saying in all, just in, oh.
All districts.
All, initially.
Every sign, every sign.
You have no idea what's going to come in.
How would you deal with?
No, not every sign.
How would we deal with a school? The fire station, one of the, one of the people that's come to me regularly, they know about this fire station. Company five would like to, put a sign, so today they put us a little letters and the letters get blown up, blown away, so.
We do, uh.
I thought we talked about this last time, I thought we were shifting away from, and we wanted to try to get something by right, but you're saying CUP for all electronic signs is where you're at? No. So, you're asking where my head is or what the?
It's a two different questions.
We don't, we don't promote it all now, so I agree with CUP for now.
In all districts.
In all districts.
It's a phase in.
Why, why?
It's totally fact.
What, what conditions would you, what, what, could we go through some conditions you would, you would think about wanting to see?
No, it's not that, the thing is, is that if we do by right and we find that we, that there's all these issues, we can't take it back.
No way to enforce it.
So, this is like a slow walk to by right.
So, what might be the issues?
Is there a way to?
We'll figure it out.
Once we have the design standards.
But you can't remember what's said on them either though, right?
But you can't make it location specific. Not the design, yeah, design standard, you can't make.
You hear a lesson, it's, hey, that you have to throw it back.
Yeah, my, my farm on Chipperton Road, I could put, you know, all kinds of, uh, political activism stuff on a flash and say anything about it on the side of the road.
Well, you could find that a, a sign somewhere is really distracting and causing, causing traffic accidents, that would be a, that would be a downside of it.
Correct, but I think the design standards are meant to address that. So, if we want, I don't know that we should use.
Well, it's, it's not necessarily.
Process to, to hone out the design standard.
Well, then once you say, no, no, keep it as enough.
That's what we've been doing because we haven't.
But, Joanne, it's not necessarily the, the, something you can cure with the design standards because you cannot, you, you, you can't regulate content as far as I know. It's supposed to be about it, put a scantily clad lady up on the, up on the sign and every other guy's going to be gawking at it. I think the board, pardon me.
Every other.
The designs are always.
Yeah, yeah.
Mr. Chair, I think the board.
So, we can't, we can't, so I go back to if we're going to do this, allow signs and ask for CUPs, what's the question we're going to ask in our, you need a CUP? Show, here's the conditions we want you to meet.
Yeah, I know.
We can't talk about.
No, no, but the thing is, is you can at least find out what impact they're going to have on the community. You don't allow it.
It gives the neighbors, if your neighbor wants to put up a political sign on their farm or whatever, you know, some light sign, you have the ability to say, no, I don't want that right next door. It gives you.
It is the process.
It gives the public the opportunity.
We can't, we can't speak to content, you know.
Correct, right, but you can say, you know, I'm against it, you don't address the content.
You can say that fit in this particular area.
We're looking at something.
Well, that's why I'm saying, saying at least in a business, along here on business or in, in West Creek where it's, it's designed manufacturing industrial. What do we hope to accomplish with a CUP?
We have some control over it.
Control, but what control? I don't want, I don't want to control the content, I want people to be able to advertise their business. But that's design, that's the design piece which I think we've got.
Just so you know, and I don't want to make this more complicated, but there is some of West Creek property from the access off of Hockett Road. So, if you're worried with the concern you had about Dover Hall putting up a sign, that could happen on Hockett Road in West Creek just as easily. And so, I'm not sure that's getting you anywhere, but it's just.
Does, does making it a CUP address that issue?
At least makes people aware and they can have a voice on it.
It gives people a chance to come out and speak against it or speak for it, which, which is good, but the question I have is what criteria are we going to use as board to judge whether, I don't care about content, we don't care about content. I care about design, the hours of the day, all those sorts of things.
Brightness level.
That's all in design, so if we can get comfortable with design, I'm not sure what else I want to know, particularly in the business and commercial areas.
Just those two.
Legally, you can't expand their rights.
You can give them more. You're trying to take their right away. All the tables so quickly turn.
Gradually, what we do a CUP expands their rights.
Well, what about, what about something in the middle of the business and commercial by right, everything else CUP?
Well, I was, I was scrolling through.
What's that do?
That, that, but I'm looking at the, well, there's several, and I'm looking at A one and I'm looking at what are permitted and what are CUP uses. Because part of this could be, if I'm trying to do something in agricultural area that I need a CUP, then I could make that sign application part of that CUP, right? So, so I'm looking for things that are by, by permit. I mean, we have, um, a farmer's market is by permit, so in A one. So, if I wanted to, I'd have, we'd have to have, we'd have to go through the CUP if we, if we take it out of agriculture. What, what I think we want to watch out for, residential is by permit, right, residential.
It's a permit, P is permitted use.
CUP means you forget a permit for it.
Right, so a manufactured home, a single-family dwelling, two fam, no, two families, so, single-family detached dwelling is permitted at A one. So, we're worried about, we're opening up where anybody that has a house and they want to sell it or let it sound. So, I, I get, I get their reluctance on the, on the agricultural areas, but I, I, I'm lust, I just don't want to get into this board kind of, uh, controlling through the CUP process. Business signs where businesses and commercials. Beyond the design, which I think with the design is where we're going to deal with, um, don't block traffic, you know, the, the, don't, don't have flashing things, don't have quickly changing scrolling messages, which are all, you know, safety related. Drive, driving by, those sorts of things, that's, that's my thought, but I, I don't want all of these coming through a CUP when, when I think we can address really what we should be addressing in the design component.
So, what's your recommendation?
What districts would you have?
Yeah, right.
Is what, B1, B2, or B1, B3, M1, M2? That's it? Bob, did you wanna make a point?
Yeah, just quickly, I just think that the board's kind of getting into the sign police. I, I mean, I'm, I'm just concerned that the board, the board's administrative functions, the, the board's function is probably not to weigh in on individual signs. That the, that the overarching responsibility of the board is to set the policy for the signs and let it, and let it run that way versus being an arbiter of some sort of decision about whether or not we're gonna put a sign here or not. I think that's, I think it's a waste of the board's time, and I think there's other pressing issues that the board would have downstream, especially if you opt to go another way in the next year or two, is that sign ordinance, as those, as those signs start to appear before the board, you'll be spending a fair amount of time on that. I'm not sure if that's the best use of board sign, I wouldn't think it'd be the best use of my time as an executive. So I would prefer to have something in policy that would set that, that would set it up, and the board can obviously go, either way, it can go no signs, or it can say signs by right in specific areas. And really limit the number of conditions where you think a sign has to come to the board. Otherwise, I just think you're, I just think you're in the sign policing business, and that's what you're gonna be spending your time doing, arbitrating, you know, ten people that come to the board and say they don't like the sign, same, another group of ten people coming in and say they do like the sign, and then you sitting in the middle of having to make that decision. So if you want to do that, I guess as a future board consideration, then it'd be up to you, but I think it would be a waste of, I think it'd be a waste of executive time. I think it'd be a waste of staff time, and I think it'd be just a huge waste for you. My opinion.
I tend to be with Bob. I, I, um. Well, we're trying to help you out.
We're supposed to now just support, give me government signs, can we give me your phone number?
We're trying to help.
Oh, I'm sorry.
I'm developing signs. I just, I just don't really, I mean, to me, it's a, it's a matter of fairness in a, in a way, because we're doing it by zoning, but the, the businesses which typically have more money, more need for the signs to make more money, are the ones that are not going to have to go through a CUP process. And we're gonna make a charge for a farmer's market come through and request a permit so they can sell some tomatoes for my chickens' lay eggs. And I want to sell the eggs, and I want to put a little sign that says, fresh eggs.
But not flashing.
Not flashing, no, 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 not this.
Just this.
No plating, no.
So I, I just, I mean, that's, to me, I think it's over, overregulating.
So why could you design? He would be, he would let, no signs in agricultural districts, but no CUP?
I would, I would let them everywhere with the design standards.
Mr. Chair, if you may give a quick, um, I think Bob and Manny are on to something. And then it's probably micromanaging, just sign by sign approval around the county is probably not a board. But where I, where I pull up short is I don't want to take citizen input out of the process. If you go from not permitted to by right, and it just put on autopilot, we've completely cut the citizen down. In developing policy, not approving individual signs, I'd like to bring the public comment process into that development of policy. So by the time we're done with policy and design standards, it's already incorporated a lot of the comments from citizens. So if we went through a public hearing process and showed them a map and said, here's all the places a sign could go, are you okay with this? And we get broad approval from citizens, I think we adopt the policy, go forward, and we're out of that business. But, but to jump from prohibited to permitted by right with no public comment, I think is a big jump.
But there's, but there's gonna be public comment on the zoning ordinance rewrite. This is the time, and what policy besides design review would you, you said policy and design review. What policy other than design review do you want public input in? Because the public input is now, because we're, we're doing the design piece as part of the zoning rewrite. This is the time to get public input. And I agree, is it widely advertised, you know, right now? No.
You go to citizens, first question is, do you want electronic signs or not? So far, they've said, no, we don't have, right? So that's, that's policy, should we or shouldn't we? But, but I guess I, you know, I come back to, you know, it needs to go through that process now. You tell me, yeah, well, we're gonna take this, this notebook and put it out to citizens and say, do you have any comments? Or if you come to them and go, here's a map of all the places you could have electronic sign, and let's have a public hearing, and that, what do you think? You're getting a different response. I, I think, I don't want to bury it on page three hundred in that manual, and, and then later on, when the sign goes up, always, so this is, you approved it. Is your gun with us? I mean, I think it needs to be.
But this is the time to get to know what we're doing, this is the time to announce the work we're doing. Not, not on a sign by sign basis. So once we nail down, A, question do we want them or not, or question them one, and then if we want, what are the standard, design standards? After that, we gotta get out of the business.
I mean, we've survived this long without them. I mean, how important really are they? Who's testing them?
They provide the internet.
They could.
Mobile hotspot.
Or self-serve.
I think we can sell them. Cause everywhere.
It's big money, it'd be signs every hundred feet.
I would be hesitant to approve this by right throughout the entire county without public input.
I, I agree.
But we, we, this is the time, do we need to advertise it more instead of burying it in page three hundred?
I agree.
Yes, let's give.
It needs public input.
Does this have to be part of the zoning rewrite?
It could be several.
I don't want to pass the buck. On this one, I don't want to pass the buck. Cause I think it's overdue, I mean, I, I think, um.
We've been asking, when I was in school, or this is something we've been wanting to do for, since like year two, yeah, I'm not opposed to it.
But you've survived this fun battle.
I can't argue with that. I know years from now.
No, I'm, I'm not arguing against them.
Do people really pay that much attention to them with advertisement?
Yeah, it keeps me from driving and texting all the time.
I mean, you know, you're gonna, you know, I, I don't know how many, you know, like, like a church, for instance, I don't know how many people have pulled into a church because of a sign. You know, unless it's something that they're having an event for, or likewise at the very front.
Does every church in Henrico have a LED sign because they're not doing any good thing?
No.
So churches, I'm sure churches.
Also, also, these things are not cheap. Not everybody's gonna pay for one, not every church is gonna pay for one, these are very expensive signs.
And you gotta run forward to them, you gotta.
Exactly, so they're not inexpensive options.
About a thirty thousand dollar investment.
Correct. So that's gonna be a self-regulating thing by itself.
Yeah, not everybody's gonna run out.
Correct, they may want to, but when they.
Sell a lot of eggs. Most of the gas stations, they don't have that long pole, most of the banks.
Right, exactly.
The schools, I mean, just.
They exist.
Volunteers want it for fire, you know, there's a lot of uses for this that would happen.
Correct.
You're right, not everybody, you probably want.
The fruit stand is not gonna buy one.
There are a lot of uses, I see that, I get that, I'm not opposed to this, but it's just how, the process, how we get from here to.
Can we get, at least get off-center from today's no standard to a yes with at least a CUP?
I think that's gonna be the best way, cause there's no, we don't have any now. If you do CUP, then we can judge how many we're gonna have and go from there. I'll just step forward.
But then how many we're gonna have, do we care how many we have?
Well, we can.
A value.
I mean, but is it first come, first served? And it's like, oh, you know, we've got already five signs in the village, I'm sorry, you can't give us six signs.
Well, to their point, it's not a, it's not an affordable, if you want to call it that, I don't think everyone's gonna be like, Ken might be able to do it, but I might not be able to.
But here, I mean, John, the first, let's say the first one, right? We pass it with CUP, first one comes in, first thing you manage is community engagement, right? So now we'll have our first public input on our first sign, and we'll be able to see, and depending on where it is and what the intense use is, and after you have a second or third one, you start to see some pattern develop of whether the citizens are on board with it or not, what the standards are or not. So we can begin to design something, then we can get out of the CUP business. We did that for drive-in restaurants, we did it for apartments. Apartments over the, you know, we just talked about that, so we don't know what we don't know right now. And to, to, to jump and not be able to do a tagback is a little uncomfortable without having that citizen input, so.
I just don't, I don't see how you don't get into a First Amendment right question, once you allow them at all. Because if I, if I come in and say, you didn't allow my sign, you allowed that sign.
Doesn't matter, in fact, there's a Virginia Supreme Court case of only a few years ago, in which Hanover County allowed electronic message sign for shopping center right here, and not a thousand feet away, they denied a CUP for electronic message sign for a shopping center. And that went up before the Supreme Court, and the court said, different cases, it reached a different result. That close, two shopping centers, court said, no, allowing and denying, perfectly okay. I'll always make sure you have your grounds appropriate. And it wasn't based on what they were gonna say, which would be, but, so no, now, you guys have a broader view of that than the court does. With your R3 districts, you could today change all of them to need, to, to, to need a CUP for duplex and triplex, and you choose not to. So you might feel compelled to not change those property rights, but the court is gonna uphold your being able to make those stations, or to allow them everywhere, and then potentially call it back. Not, not as to one piece or another piece, but if you, in the future, pulled it back, you could. Then again, it will also uphold you doing the CUP, and in the future, run again. Those are all gonna be legally available to you.
See, I like that better, steps, a phase in.
A CUP is the only way we have of dipping in electrical water.
Yep, I agree. It's there.
The other way is take it out to town halls and put up a slide and say, what do you guys think? If they throw beer cans out, then you know. If you want to test the waters for public opinion before.
I mean, there is.
I think it's a step.
You can do it how much before you even say yes, before you even go to CUP.
And there's some citizens, and we should try and get some citizen feedback.
If they're gonna invest thirty thousand dollars, I think the application process, they're gonna go through it, it's serious.
I, I am quite concerned that it is gonna create probably more division than, because you're gonna have both sides, you're gonna probably equal.
We're just gonna, I don't want signs, so, I mean, so we can use the CUP process to determine whether we want to even allow the signs? I don't think that's, that doesn't make sense, and that's not.
What would see our reasoning for not allowing it? Ten people said no, some person said yes, or it's something else.
You would perhaps if it's, you know, it is a, a, opposite of residential home, the light's gonna shine into, you know, people's bedrooms and their living space, that, that there's a reason to say no in a particular location rather than in another. It's not gonna be based on content, it's not gonna be based on.
Those things can also be somewhat unreasonable. I know when, when we approved McDonald's and the Taco Bell, the folks in the neighborhood down the street said those lights are gonna keep us awake at night, even though they don't even see it, or, so.
Yes, I'm never gonna promise you that the citizens are only going to raise logical, reasonable grounds. That's why when you guys deny or push something.
Those people don't win, I guess.
They think they're doing the right thing.
Yeah, they live somewhere else.
Well, you know, the, the whole thing about electronic signs really don't comply with my standpoint, our ordinance system standpoint, that we want to maintain a rural camp.
I agree.
You know, that's a, almost the first sentence, and you comprehend the plan to maintain the rural character, and it's certainly not keeping with the rural character. So if we want to allow them, I think we need to specify very specifically how much we're gonna deviate from the rural character, and then let it go at that.
Is that a design question?
Yeah, I think I do it under design.
I think it's more.
Cause like, obviously, you're gonna be, yeah, which policies which district. I mean, just like we changed, we redid the thing on the apartments, for what's allowed, to eliminate all those coming up before the boards all the time.
That's certainly the approach that I saw Chesterfield take. They originally adopted it essentially by CUP, and then they had standards, like you have to be a thousand square, a thousand feet apart, you could, you know, and, and then they just very recently adopted it to allow by right, and they did it step by step. I don't know the others, I can at least speak from my experience.
Yeah, hopefully, maybe, sometimes I maintain the rural character, I mean, we're elected to represent folks, and I need to know what they're thinking before I can represent them. What they're thinking is, I like rural, and this does, this seems to detract from that, you know, we need to know that. I'd like to know that before you make a decision on it, you know?
I get, yeah, and I understand, I understand, yeah, oh, sorry, John. I understand, I'm just trying to figure out the difference between Goochland rural and Hanover, Powhatan, Louvana, New Kent, and Louisa rural.
There's any difference between those names?
I don't know, but I can tell you if you now know the difference between Goochland and Louisa. Exactly.
I'm just wondering if, when they're talking rural, that they must be talking a different kind of rural than Goochland is.
I think you're on, right?
Okay.
You're on to something.
Yeah, you are.
Pretty interesting.
Your question is, should we do electronic signs or not? Fair enough.
Yeah, that's the question. Yes, it does like the saying rural to say we don't want, I mean, I think the possible question is, is do you want signs or not? Not whether you're rural or not, that's not the question. The question is, do you want signs? If you want it back into, we don't want signs because we're rural, that's not.
But then you're taking an area that's, like in the east, where there's more business, we're trying to attract business, and we're saying, you can't, you can't advertise your business in a way that is becoming more and more frequently, and the firehouse street, they can't say, you know, auction this weekend or whatever, and the school can't say football game this Friday night, you know, in, in a way that somebody can read it. So I think there's a need, I think there would be a benefit, I think this is what uses.
Those are natural, yeah.
Of course. Yeah, so, so we're doing a CUP, CUP comes out, plus one of it.
I don't like them.
I mean, you do enough of them, and it becomes, I guess, evidentiary.
It is what it is.
But then, then again, we know it's gonna, we're gonna get sucked into it, and to try and address content. Which we won't do, but then I'm like, what will we accomplish with a CUP?
What should we already suggest should be handled with a cop end review? Is there any downside to not having electronic signs for the next six months?
I will say that we do have many, not many, we have a few requests for some people who really would like to see electronic message short signs.
I know, it's not so commercial, business.
Uh, no, churches, schools, fire stations.
I think you're gonna be really busy next year if we make business CUP. We'll be spending more time on signs.
Well, we won't have any accessory apartments, maybe.
To trade off. To trade off, to, to, trading time. So we, we get out of the bedroom, but we.
I can see it now. So what did you do at your board meeting tonight?
Oh, well, we approved flashing signs.
Right. Or we didn't.
I mean, you have some time.
That's making progress.
To have public input, honestly, I don't want to consider it with this.
In town halls.
No, but I mean, you, you, instead of just having zoning rewrite, like if we'd known your thoughts before this, this could have been a work session on electronic message signs and the zoning rewrite. I would, I would, I, I would prefer to have some direction tonight, as, you know, we've got a really short timeframe, and I don't want to take one issue and sort of, everything else, all the good work kind of gets lost with the one issue. So I would really prefer, I'm gonna push your list, I'm sorry about that, but.
But adoption in November, so town halls are in October.
I would not recommend town halls for this issue.
I wouldn't either.
If you're gonna put a sticky, I want signed up, to do it as part of a discussion at a town hall, I guarantee you, the town halls are gonna get a little preoccupied this October.
Better way to use citizen input. Right, I was gonna say, if you want citizen input, which we want.
Can we put it on the ballot?
Yeah.
I think our town halls are about to go to three to five hour town halls.
What's a better way? What's a, what's a better way?
If you're not comfortable punting this and dealing with it later, I mean, the way we've proposed to you is, CUP or by right, put it in, let people come out to the public hearings, which you have two scheduled, and weigh in on one of those two options. It's a, it's an issue amongst many, but I, I know some of the folks are already talking to us, that's their issue. They don't care about the rest of the zoning ordinance rewrite, they want to come and weigh in on your sign issue.
And we want to hear from them, right?
Yes, absolutely, and, I mean, we've talked about at least six public meetings, but there's probably been fifteen public meetings where this has been discussed. Yes, absolutely, and, I mean, we've talked about at least six public meetings, but there's probably been fifteen public meetings where this has been discussed. There is, there's additional opportunities for people to weigh in on this. If you, I mean, we're going, this isn't the noise ordinance where we're creating committees and, and having substantial pieces of it. It's, I think you have, you have two ways forward now, well, actually you have three, you can do nothing. And not, not allow them here, or allow them with CUPs, or allow, or allow them by right in certain areas. Just, there are opportunities for people to come in and speak in this. If, if not, I just don't believe your fall allows for a lot more opportunity for us to just make this a one-off issue for, for in-depth discussion.
I think the rural question, which is the, is the key one, would be to not allow it in agricultural. But I think you make a good point that we're actually making it toughest on probably the smaller operations who may not put signs. But that, that's not a reason to do a CUP in a business or industrial area.
No.
So I would support by right in business industrial and a CUP everywhere else.
We have the, uh...
Well, I think it's gonna be so pleasing a little bit, because a, you know, when you look at what's permitted, now fire and rescue, there, there, a fire and rescue station is, is by, by right in agricultural. Uh, but that's just kind of us having to pay for it, you know, to process, you know, another agency or a school or a fire. Um, I don't know what schools have that, us.
No, I wouldn't want to make it so that the government can have it.
Oh, no, I wouldn't want for that either.
No, no, but I'm saying, I'm saying a CUP, a CUP in agricultural area, we might have a fire station, and we might have, I mean, the rest of it are small, tend to be smaller, smaller operations. I mean, I don't see anything in agricultural permitted uses. Other than fire station and, and, uh...
Churches, group homes, junkyards, there, there's a lot of stuff in there.
Home occupation, I mean, these things are, so. I mean, I've, I've already said, you know, I think business and industrial, I'm not sure what we'd accomplish by making it with this. Once we're comfortable with the design standards, and I, I don't think we should use the CUP to flesh out design standards, that should maybe, maybe that should be something.
No, not a lot, you know, in fact.
For design sake, it's a sign, though, I mean, not, not design. But another, we'd use that process to help develop a set of standards.
Maybe I'll just take a poll around the row.
Probably a time for that.
I think you don't know. I mean, but it's especially what a CUP is, isn't it? Yeah. So, I mean, Ken.
I'm definitely knowing by right at this point, because no citizen input. The CUP, I don't think I'm ready to find out which districts and which ones not, although I'd like to be able to do it at some point. So I guess I'm a no sign right now.
So, Ken said no?
John, I've already kinda said I'm leaning towards signs, but I would love to, I would love to flesh this out and find out exactly what can we accomplish through a CUP in a business, if we can accomplish something that in the CUP process, I would approve other four signs, and I'm okay with the CUP if I can understand what we will accomplish other than getting into content management.
What does that mean? I, I know what that's, but right now, I guess I'm a no count.
Yeah, I mean. CUP? Signs, signs with CUPs, once I can understand exactly how, how.
Everywhere, I'll, I'll, every district, every reselling.
Yeah, signs, we made signs with CUPs, but I wanna understand, a little better understanding, what exactly, will we be able to accomplish something that'll achieve the rural and some of the other concerns that we have through the CUP process? So can you summarize that for us?
Four sign CUPs is what I've heard, huh?
Yes.
So, CUP?
Yes, signs, CUPs.
Tom?
I agree with Manny, no.
With who? No, I said no. I thought it was Susan, I wanna go last.
We've got the no, no.
I would say without knowing anymore, no. But I, I agree with John, I think that more needs to be flushed out, but no, with what we have to make a decision, no.
I think CUP with everyone.
CUP with all, yes, yes on signs, CUP. John?
I simply don't see any huge benefit to the public, so I say no.
Signs, CUP. But, sign, CUP, and I'm, sign, CUP.
I will, I'll tell you what, I will go sign, CUP, because there's, obviously more things will, will come out, so sign, CUP. Because that, that was my original. I'll change, I'll flip, I'll flip, I'll be. Sorry, sorry.
If I could say one. Just, could I ask a question, Mr. Chair? So, Joe, do you know what, do you know what Albemarle does? Because they have, theirs, theirs sign, yes, special use permit. So do we know what Albemarle does when they entertain any of their sign? Do we get some, maybe we get some minutes from a meeting or something to see what they? I mean, at some, at some point, I don't want you, you know, just to get an idea of what they're looking at.
Find out what their criteria is for turning what they're talking about right now.
Yeah, and I agree with John, I agree with John, the board needs to have definitive criteria, we have had this discussion before, John. The boards need to have definitive criteria on what rules in or rules out an approval of a...
Not if we say no to them.
Not if you say no, right, but, correct, but.
We've had that discussion in self towers, under your grounds, to say yes or no, and areas that are sensitive. You wanna make sure we're on legal ground.
Yeah, yeah, I, yeah, it's, just gotta have some.
So, so it looks like CUP, signs with CUP wins.
And that would be agricultural, commercial, and industrial districts.
Business.
Yes.
And when I bring this back to you as a follow-up, I'm gonna get some more information from Albemarle and talk about their special use permit process.
Thank you.
Yeah, right, you know? But you have to have some control on, and you can't control the content. You know, we can kinda get their intent.
Uh, I have one caveat, we did add in there that gas stations can have the LED signs, is everybody comfortable with that? Because almost all of them already have them right now. It's only sixteen square feet, sixteen square feet.
So, would we do, would we write a gas station, you have a sign, that could be ordered to spend that?
It says the price, it says the price, that they can have a price area.
It does not say price, it doesn't say price. Gas stations can have sixteen square feet of LED signs.
Which is small, so their purpose likely.
Yeah, but you gotta get, you gotta get that's in the sign.
Well, I would say probably every gas station in Goochland already has that, they just didn't get.
Not Lamar, but the other guy.
I mean, can you do that by industry?
You can do it by use.
Yeah, but that, the club wouldn't do that.
Not by content.
It's just not, not a club would do.
Use being gas station?
Go over my, but I don't think they're gonna allow that.
And so they can be used to gas stations, long as they sell gas, they can do it.
I mean, you're not gonna get a lot of traffic.
That would be correct, yep. So everybody is comfortable with adding that for a gas station?
Traffic can really control. There's not a lot, probably not.
Okay, I knew that was gonna be the long one, so, um...
Same deal.
Yeah.
I thought it was the other one.
I thought the hard one was the second one.
All right, so another sign one, the signs, signs are very complicated. So, um, at one of the meetings, um, well, I guess during the sign conversation, there was questions about allowing off-premise signs for certain events such as Bethlehem Walk, field days.
Could you go back to the three month yesterday, and you appeared to have a little discussion and have a question? Okay, they can have sixteen square feet of lighting going signs, plural. They can have one sixteen square foot sign, right?
Yes.
Now, that's on, but it can be on both sides though, right?
Yeah, and it, we don't count both sides.
I mean, it's gotta be just, the thing is a total of sixteen.
Yeah.
Oh, so you can have two eight by eight signs? I mean, two eight square foot signs?
No. No, you get sixteen feet on this side and sixteen feet on this side.
Right.
So you can have, so, so when you...
We, when it's a double face sign, we only count one face.
Okay, good, and that's clear in what I were writing up, but.
Shouldn't I say a sixteen square foot sign?
Yes, you wanna change it to a, a single, a sign?
Yes.
Up to sixteen feet?
That's not required.
Right, yes.
Yeah. A sign up to sixteen square feet.
Catch, catch that, can we?
Each side, okay.
There we go. Okay.
Tell him where we want it.
Okay.
All right, thank you.
Um, so as I was saying, there's questions about allowing off-premise signs for certain events such as Bethlehem Walk, field days, et cetera. Um, I did some benchmarking on this, I could not find other localities that has specific standards for off-premise signs um, other than Chesterfield, and actually Tara had brought it to my attention, um, that they do allow a certain number of temporary off-premise signs of certain dimensions which were permitted relating to a use of limited duration, and permitted them to be displayed a certain amount of time before and after the user's activity is advertised. Again, some concerns with that is, you know, it's, it's, it's an enforcement issue, we'd have to be knowing when the event is, you know, if they have it ten days before and have to have them ten days down. Um, it would increase signage in the area. Our recommendation right now is not address off-premise signs, but if, if the board feels strongly about it, we could come up with something along the Chesterfield standards.
So we have nothing right now?
Yep.
Okay, I'm good with that.
But they're everywhere.
Okay, but don't get bad with it when somebody says, hey, you know when I turn it to fairgrounds and there's seventeen signs? I want those all gone, because we'll send a zoning inspector out there and say, those all need to go, and everybody's gonna go.
No, but she's saying right now they're all allowed.
No, they're all disallowed.
They're all disallowed.
Oh.
They're allowed only if, if in the code.
Okay, I'm sorry, that's what I asked, okay.
And you cannot go out there and say, we're only going to take down the ones with this content to this content.
Yeah, that's so loud.
So I think, um...
So the other thing that's not allowed, for instance, is that directional sign at the end of the subdivision, you know, open house today. That's not permitted, because that's off the premises of where, what the activity is. The idea is, anything on your premises, what's happening there, you can say. As soon as you step off your premises, you're not allowed to have a sign up to say, go here. So what's another one? Rec, uh, anybody who does a private recreational signups. We, the county, aren't bound by our, our sign ordinance, but if you've got private organizations that are like Little League signups, and they put it on a fence of a property they don't own, it's not allowed. And I'm, I'm not saying that I want people out there policing this, but I just want you all to be aware that if someone starts making those complaints, we would follow whatever the ordinance says. And that, that's my procedure to do with that.
Are there complaints, there are too many signs? So what's the reason for not allowing?
Exactly, I'm with you, what's the point in not allowing?
I mean, it gets information, useful information out there. And if you don't want one in your yard, you're gonna take it, pill it up anyway.
And the problem is, a lot of times they're in the right of way.
Right.
It's on someone's property.
But is that right, isn't that regulated by a VDOT, though, whether you can put them in the right of way or not?
VDOT does, VDOT does not allow them, they don't specifically have anybody go out and pick them up. We used to pick them up, um, when they were in the right of way, but we're, since we're not in compliance right now, we've halted that.
So, so, let's try to use a rural example, I'm driving down Fairground, I get to the end, and I'm looking at the field, and I see all the signs there. Are those legal, illegal, or what?
They are illegal.
Most of them are gonna be illegal? All right, so do we want to wrap them?
Just because of their, they're just temporary signs?
Because they're all premises.
And they're banners, yeah.
They're all premises, there's everything from, you know, I mean, there's all, all sorts of content there, you know, political events, sign up for Goochland News, all those sorts of things.
This applies to election signs?
No, you're allowed temporary.
Election signs are restricted, they, they have to go on private property with permission, and none of them be done right of way, and none of these common areas, so it, we're not able to restrict that at all, it's free speech, but they're only allowed to be in certain places, so all that, and that. So, so you're talking about fairgrounds, that's one, you come off Oilville sixty-four, you get a T. We got sign clutter, and the question is, is that really the message you wanna send to somebody coming in off sixty-four to go, so, boom, there's all our clutter?
Well.
Well, 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 if you haven't, if you haven't taken those crews in other counties, all the counties have them.
All free sheriff candidates there, you know?
I know what you're saying.
Yeah, so, and there are, and there are, and there are a couple of other intersections, like, they, people targeted the key, high traffic, we gotta stop, a T, and you gotta look, and that's where they just cluttered all the sign right there. So the question is, is that, you know, is that what we want, is that appropriate, to answer your question?
We don't want that.
Well, it's not permanent now.
Well.
Correct, and there's some discussion about should we allow off-premise or not, or should we just keep it the way it is? And then if we keep it the way it is, enforcement, and then selected enforcement, added enforcement, who does, all that stuff. So, those are, those are questions that we're supposed to be discussing between now and nine o'clock, so.
Well, the enforcement really is not an issue, we would assume as a part of your zoning ordinance that would be complaint-based only and enforced by zoning, and taken to court if they don't implement compliance with a notice of violation. I mean, that's how that would be intended to go, that, it's not really a separate discussion, though.
So who can bring it against, if it's off-premises, if I see, I would think entrance.
Don't with someone's property, even if it's a right of.
I was gonna say, so if it's at the, well, like at the entrance to Holland Hills, there, there's open, you know, open house this weekend, or, or, just a for sale, lead-in for sale. If it's not in the beat out right of way, then who do we, who do we go after in terms of leakage? I mean, you can obviously look at who's on the sign and call them up.
Uh, potentially the property owner who's got the sign on their property, and the place that it's being directed to, potentially both, maybe just the property.
Uh, I'm in a corner lot, at the entrance to the subdivision, people put signs there all the time, open house Sunday. They don't usually ask for permission, but it's one of my neighbors, so I'm not gonna say no. Is that an issue?
It's not legal, it's not legal.
It's not legal for them to be on my property?
If, if...
Because I actually had, one day I came home from lunch, and there was actually a big truck sitting there with a for sale sign.
That'd be a bit much, did it, did it have any LED lights?
I told them, I said, you have fifteen minutes, or it's mine.
Two, there are two questions there, one is, if someone complains to me about that sign, a notice of violation would go to a, to the property owner on whose sign, on whose property it sits, okay? Because the property owner has, can control the use of their property, even if they haven't asked permission. And the other issue, and, and it, so it's an off-premise sign on the property, it's also illegal if you just don't like it, because no one's allowed to put a sign on private property without permission of the property.
Right, so I understand that, I mean, I should be able to take it down.
Yeah.
And I've taken them down before, but I, I think we should, you know...
If you get permission, though, now it's, it's, it's still illegal.
Still illegal, again, and no one is suggesting that they're suddenly gonna have fifty-five, you know, complaints about this, and it's gonna be a big deal. But in, in my role, as the person who ultimately enforces stuff, I wanna make sure it doesn't become time for Bethlehem Walk, and we get some complaints, and then you all go, I don't, I don't want that to, those are, we, that's a big community event from, field days of the past, we support that event, I want that to allow, and I'll be like, hmm, that's not really how it goes.
Can you not allow it where I can put what I want in my yard? If it is a man's off-site event, and he wants to advertise it in my yard, I'm okay to do that? Well, I know you can't now, but is that, can we allow where you can put what sign you want on your box?
It's not anybody.
Tell, I mean, if I wanna put a Bethlehem Walk sign on my property, at this point, it's not legal to do that. And I think it should be, that's weird.
You could, you could of course allow off-premise signs on residential property. That's, I mean, you could carve out that district.
I would do it on private property, I would do it on just residential.
RHO actually limits it, and it specifies, what, the sign, you know, that you can have a sign with your name, basically, you can have, you know. And then you can also have for sale signs on your own property, I don't know that it talks about.
But the H of the past, talk about.
Field days, that's on their, well, yeah.
That's on proof, it's probably.
Right, but at the corner, that, everything's advertised there, Little League. For sale signs.
Yeah, yeah.
And it looks awful.
Temporary premises or...
I would think it's temporary, I'd argue.
I would.
And it's only for a use of limited duration. Okay, so your real estate sign, you're only gonna have an open house for, you know, a couple of hours.
couple of hours. The Field Days of the past is three days.
But if I wanna put it on my property, I can't do that.
Right now, you cannot do it.
What, what law prohibits you from putting a sign on your property?
I think we should go with the Chesterfield off-premise application.
Everything, all.
Chesterfield approach, on private property.
Right now, part of the zoning rewrite, I mean, you're only allowing certain signs on your property now, certain height, certain size, square foot, right? That's already, already.
Yeah.
Yeah, this adds to that if it's something related to an activity that's not occurring on the property. Again, and keep in mind that. The Supreme Court decision has said, while it was not a majority decision from, from the US Supreme Court, they did say stuff occurring on the property is not occurring. Off-premise is a little bit in that. It, it, it may not because that court's changed, nobody can predict exactly where that will come down, but.
Okay, let's, um.
Yeah, let's do it.
Let's try to move on. What's your preference? We don't have to have something, we could leave it like it is.
Leave it like it is.
Just continue to go.
And they're prohibited, which means they're prohibited.
But it hasn't been a problem.
Hasn't been an issue.
Hasn't been an issue, but I, I think when people realize that they're prohibited, it's gonna become an issue.
How quickly can you change the process if it comes up that you need to?
Ordinance amendment takes about seventy-five days.
So we could do it.
And so, but we're not enforcing it, is what we're saying?
Right. We have not, well, no, we have not enforced the sign ordinance since it was unconstitutional to the decision, at least the timeline.
And leave it?
If there's a complaint and we don't act on the complaint, what's the deal there?
That's what I wanna say.
We don't have a sign become true.
No. But if a citizen complains about his zoning ordinance comes in now of any kind, an inspector goes and inspects it and then takes whatever actions appropriate for violation occurs. That's what I don't want you to do. I just don't want you to get in the business of saying, yeah, 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 but we're not gonna force that. But you're not, you're not getting a slew of them, and if you suddenly did, you could change your ordinance.
In three months' time, we could, we could change it to fix the situation.
Okay, we're gonna leave this census on leaving this.
All right, so, no signs too big to run away from. Next one.
Yes, okay.
The next easy one.
This is, this is a yes or no, and this should be easier. So that's the final decision point. So right now, in the current ordinance, even though it hasn't been widely used, there is a provision that allows any use that is not specifically in the code to be requested to the CUP process. So say your property is zoned A1 and, you know, a nuclear power plant wanted to come in there trying to pick up something very offensive. It's not listed in any, in any of the uses, so they could request a cut for that. They could request a cut for the A1. So our concern is that there would be a lack of transparency. People, you know, should be able to know what potential uses are going next to them. If we've removed it, if somebody wanted to come in with a new use, we would be able to do the same process, Mr. Duke, you know, about seventy-five days. We could benchmark other localities, determine whether, you know, it might not even wanna be a CUP use, it might be more appropriate as a byright use. So we would recommend not having this in the, in the new code, but, you know.
So you're saying to not allow a CUP?
For any use. So it would, you would be then limited to what uses are currently in the code.
Or you have to change the code.
Or change the code.
You can't be just flexible and have it there as an option.
Have we ever had any that have come forward?
Scott Gazer originally came through with CUP for apartments where he wants to put Manic in Town, and we told him, no, we would want it to do an ordinance amendment, which, you know, then became fair and light, the FUD.
So it's a way to go around the zoning ordinance.
Okay, I changed my mind.
Do you wanna have that work around or do you wanna go through the ordinance?
No, we wanna go through.
I'm in the ordinance.
I'm in the, so we'll delete this provision, see? I knew that.
Okay, okay. The question.
Yes.
Let's see, for instance, I'm in a business, I'm in a business zone, and I wanted to create a business for, say, a, 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 a smoking bar where you can come in and smoke anything that's legal. There's probably not a CUP, there's not probably not a description of a C, of, of, of a smoking bar in the code right now. And you're saying that I couldn't get a CUP, if we eliminated this CUP for any, um, using that in the code, my smoking bar would go up in smoke.
So I will say that we use some common sense when someone comes in with uses. So often we have uses that are not exactly the same, but, you know, I know you're just trying to come up with an example, but that would be, you know, a bar, nightclub, restaurant. So we would try to fit it under another category, you know? Like, we had a towing company come in that wasn't really specifically listed, but we did have, you know, automobile service and storage. So, you know, we tried to, to, to use common sense. So if there's something similar, we wouldn't go this path, we would go with the existing use.
Okay, okay.
Makes sense.
Okay.
Okay.
I think you got it.
All right, so that's, that's a no, great. All right, so I think we're now through all of those. The timeline, we did not want the planning commission to have to take this up the same night as their September planning commission meeting. I hope everybody's prepared, all the planning commissioners, to bring your pajamas on September fifth, because we have a very long night. We have the event makers, where we've already sent out twelve hundred adjoining property owners, we did it one mile radius, and we also have Manic in Town. So that's gonna be a very long evening. We didn't think you'd wanna tackle the ordinance in the same day. So thank you for agreeing to schedule a public hearing. So that will be scheduled for September nineteenth. During the month of September, I will be continuing to reach out to citizen groups, the chamber, the development community, and continue to have meetings and go through the rewrite with them. The Board of Supervisors, we've sort of waiting until we heard today, there's an option for you to, we have it on the calendar for October seventh, we can advertise that as a public hearing, or we could do a work session, one final work session to get any more additional comment, and then schedule, you know, a public hearing and vote for some time in November. So do you feel like you want another work session in October, or you feel ready for this to be a public hearing? What would you, what do you?
Well, I'm gonna, I'm gonna ask.
So I can't answer her question until I hear.
Okay.
So although we don't have it on the agenda, I'm going to go ahead and ask the folks from the public, and they would like to say anything about what they heard today, concerns. Ms. Moore, you wanna come first?
Yeah, I, I have some concerns and I have talked with a familiar about citizens import into it. We're still at a phase where we have a gap in our knowledge of ordinances and, and what they mean and the process is, is still a little fuzzy. And if it wasn't for the meeting that, that we had over in January, I still would be at ground zero. But that being said, there's so much coming up, and Mr. Peterson brought it, that, that, that we need to be at the forefront right now. And, and if we're not engaged right now, we are going to be kicking ourselves at a later date. I think moving it to the nineteenth is a great thing because most of the folks that I'm involved with are keenly, keenly attached to management, yeah, and do want to understand every aspect of the rewrite. And we do appreciate all the time and effort you have all had. We appreciate the meetings that you've had in the community, but yes, we, we do feel that this schedule is, is, is appropriate, like we met, but right now, we cannot, before the nineteenth, we can't, our group can't wrap our heads around meeting before the nineteenth. So, I don't know, you know, I, I would like to see you bring up, you brought up something about the signs. I would like for us to kind of break it up in littler segments of the, of major issues like the signs where people had a grasp of what your difference is with those points where you're going to change. So, auxiliary apartments and where you, where you're thinking about, so that we can understand exactly what the differences are and it's kind of laid out so that, so, so that we can see what the differences are gonna be in January.
You should get that on the nineteenth for starters.
So.
It should be going the same thing, right, that we just did sort of today.
So that's, that's, that's my feeling, is that, that I, I think when it's clear why we're doing the changes and where you all, I, I mean, I've attended every one of these meetings, so I have a good grasp, but the rest of the folks, it's really overwhelming to hear all this stuff and, you know, it, it is a lot of information to digest. And I just think citizens import is critical because when they see those signs go up and they hear those acronyms, they do not understand those acronyms. And when, when you don't understand something, you get a little scared, and scared people do things that they are not always proud of. So that's my, that's my story and I'm sticking to it.
Neil?
Thank you.
She still didn't answer the question, but, so we're talking about September nineteenth for the planning commission public hearing, October.
All right, I can, I can get, I, I think I can get myself wrapped around if I have the information about the, what the changes are going to be made, what you're anticipating making it for the changes.
So you're good with us having the public hearing and approve this on October seventh? Or should we wait till November? Just a question.
I think you need, on the, on the, before the hearing, the public hearing, I need the information about what you all, a digested version of what you all agreed to.
By the end of, yeah, by the end of the week, I can get a summary out and a summary on the web with planning rewrite with the six decision points and what was decided.
Really just answer the question, because there could be changes from the nineteenth. So I think the seventh should be another public hearing, that's my opinion.
Another work session?
A work session.
I'm sorry, work session.
Right, I, I agree with, I would agree with her timeline, is that what you're asking?
No, no, the question is on October seventh. Should that be a work session? Or should that be the actual final adoption?
No.
That's okay.
Not a work session, because we, we, we've got too many, too many unanswered questions. And I know it's a lot of work, but I, I think we, we spent, what, three hours right now?
Mr. Chair, if, John, if that's a work session, then when would be, when would the adoption take place?
Right.
Your November business meeting. How busy is our November business meeting?
We don't know yet because it would be the October planning commission, and I don't know, we, we haven't had the filing yet, so.
But we do have two November meeting dates. We could have a public hearing at the last.
I'd be cautious to do it at the last, because if we slide, we run out of time.
And that's Thanksgiving week, so.
Yeah, it would be the sixth if, if it's already.
We may, we may have a special meeting in November if you're not comfortable with the schedule at the business meeting.
Let's, are you saying do the first, first meeting in November, right?
Yeah.
That's our target. They wouldn't want to go into Thanksgiving week for this.
No, no, no.
No, nobody will come on Thanksgiving.
No.
We talked about that earlier.
That's the best.
Yeah, we talked about the holidays.
I, I, I think, I think, keep it as a public hearing, because we, we can, we can think of, and get, get the word out, I think.
Another question on, on the nineteenth, either it'll be.
Well, you need to do it on October seventh.
Which side is this, here you go? Or it's gonna be, jeez, we have a lot of changes. If there's a lot of changes, we're gonna have to have a discussion at our end for a work session. If there's not a lot of material substantive changes that comes to us, the way we've seen it already, then maybe there's not a need for a work session. But I hate to make it continue, do we have enough time to advertise? If, if the nineteenth goes smoothly or, or bumpy, do we know, can we call an audible on it, or is that, is that not enough?
I don't think so.
It's not enough time?
I don't think if you, if you don't find out till September twentieth.
Oh, I don't have enough time.
No, I think so.
Before we have the information.
Just has to be advertised.
So let's, you can keep, keep it as an advertised work session if you determine you don't need the work session, you can cancel it, but don't keep the public hearing at the November meeting.
Okay.
You can't suddenly decide to have a public hearing October seventh if you.
From the work session.
That's what they're gonna have.
Fair enough, so if nineteenth goes smoothly, then we, first week in November should go smoothly. If nineteenth doesn't, then we don't cancel the seventh and we go ahead and have it. Either way, we have either way, okay?
All right, I like it.
So, Neil, did you have anything?
Do you have comments or just a question?
Anything.
So, just real quick, I know you're, I, I, this is.
We have to announce what we're doing.
Oh, sure, sure. This is the, I think the third of these, I've been to all of them, three and then one on TV. So when I look at the common plan, the first thing talks about transparency, okay, you guys, that's, you guys are that exemplary, so as a citizen, I appreciate that. From a schedule perspective, I feel like you guys have gotten, the team has gotten above and beyond to give us the opportunity for input, so if somebody's gonna sleep at the wheel, it's like, okay, like, we had six of them now, so there's been ample opportunity. Just in general, I hear words like, you know, citizens, I hear words like, comments about protecting land, keeping it fair. I love all of the thoughts and the hard work that goes into it, it's very easy. I've been in a lot, on a lot of boards, rubber stamping, so to see this level of drilling down all the painful and long meetings, it's, it's refreshing. And it's just the rewrite itself, to see, to hear government and common sense in the same sentence typically doesn't happen, but you guys are doing that, and I think that's fantastic.
Thank you.
Thank you, Neil. Robert? Todd doesn't count. You see one of, one of us here, hold on, we're right there.
No, I mean, I just, so if there's a, what you don't have on there is what I've heard y'all saying, if you do the work session October seventh, when is the Board of Supervisors' public hearing?
November sixth.
November sixth.
November what?
November sixth.
The day after the election.
Or Wednesday after the election.
Oh, okay. You'll be one?
We got the meeting over there.
Do they, do they have phones, right?
No churches there.
No churches. Funny aside, no churches.
Yeah, they don't have to worry about the sun.
They're on the ground. Any, um.
It's other. You sure?
I couldn't see you. She'll. Not what I was afraid of. I have been party to this for so long that I don't, I find it the norm, and it's a really nice norm and thankful of the hard work. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for being with us here, a lot of people. Okay, so, anything else? If not, where's my little sheet? The board will. The board will, we will adjourn, the Board of Supervisors will adjourn to Tuesday, September third, and we have a one-thirty. At one-thirty, the board is invited to attend the employee service anniversary luncheon at Gushland Parks and Rec. And then the regular business meeting will be at three o'clock as usual, and then the seven PM public hearings in room two-fifty. And of course, that meeting is open to the public. So I'll adjourn the board.
And the planning commission will adjourn to Thursday, September fifth, six-thirty PM, board meeting room, conference room two-fifty, meeting is open to the public. Adjourn.
Thank you.